Twenty second twenty twenty two, regular meeting of Hawthorne City Call. The city council is called to order at six oh two P M. Today, I'll ask council member Patterson, Mayor Proton Patterson, to do the invocation tonight. Mayor Proton, and I'm going to ask the recent Mayor Proton, who is now Councilwoman, to do the pledge of allegiance. Uh, Mayor Proton.
Everybody, uh, bow their hands. And, uh, let's take some time to just give thanks for this day, for this opportunity to serve the community. Um, thanks for the community, and just pray that we make great decisions, pray for the Lord's mercy and blessings. And, um, you know, pray for safety in that, you know, in the, um, you know, while we're still facing this crazy pandemic, so, um, you wanna, wanna, you know, ask that everybody who is, um, at risk, right, are protected. Um, that everybody's safe, everybody's being safe, and I'll pray for a good meeting. Amen?
Please stand face the flag nearest you, and I think we have one on screen. Place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Proton Patterson, and thank you, Councilwoman Valentine. Uh, Mr. Clerk, the roll call, please.
Yes, uh, Councilmember Montero.
Present.
Councilmember Ray English.
Here.
Councilmember Valentine.
Here.
Mayor Proton Patterson.
Here.
And Mayor Argus.
Here.
Everyone is present. Okay, we're gonna start off with, uh, about two presentations. Uh, we're gonna start off with Councilman Montero, who has a presentation on the agenda tonight. Uh, Black History Month acknowledgement. Go ahead, Councilmember, uh, Montero.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. As you know, you know, February is Black History Month. And, um, thank you for all my colleagues to, uh, allow me to go ahead and acknowledge two individuals that have, uh, made their mark in our community. Uh, because as you know, you know, February, like I say, is a Black History Month, is a time for us to recognize and pay tribute to the journey and achievements of significant black individuals, uh, who have contributed to the greatness of our community and also to our nation. So, um, I don't believe if we have, uh, Mr. Kevin Ramsey and Tariq Brook. Eric, do we have anybody on, uh, on the other rooms?
Yes, they're, they're your council member, Montero.
So, I, um, at this time, I'm going to ask, uh, our great city manager, Mr. Juan Norris, to read the proclamation, because I'm under the weather, I'm under cloud, because my sun is acting up, so, uh, Juan, if you can read those proclamations, those two gentlemen, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Good evening, gentlemen. Um, I have in front of me two proximations. Um, and I'd like to read, the first one is for Kevin Ramsey. Uh, Kevin Ramsey was born in Los Angeles County, he moved to Hawthorne in nineteen seventy four with his mother and sister. He played sports and at an early age at Holly Park. Kevin was always, Kevin has always been motivated to expand his life knowledge and follow his entrepreneurial spirit. Right out of Washington Preparatory High School, he became a computer technician, then started selling used cars through his Ramsey Auto Sales business. Shortly thereafter, Kevin opened several small stations and started attending Southwest Community College. A former Arto sales and small station customer, Harry Ellis, that later became his business partner, encouraged Kevin to get into the construction or more ser- or into construction more seriously. In nineteen ninety seven, Kevin took over the company and started Alameda Construction Services, I N C. Having recognition, recognized how beneficial it was for a business to have a niche, Kevin began to specialize in onsite concrete such as driveways, sidewalks, curves, gutters. Kevin continued his education, received a Bachelor of Science, uh, in Administration at the University of California State, California University of Los Angeles, and a Master of Science, uh, Construction Management from the University of Southern California in June two thousand nineteen. And it is J D degree in which he took the bar on February twenty twenty. Ramsey have become, has become one of the top black owner construction companies in Los Angeles. His company, Alameda Construction, was one of the few black firms to work on the recent build at SoFi Stadium. Kevin Ramsey advised for new construction looking to build a business to keep learning as much as possible. Get out of there, get out there and network and provide the best quality work possible. At this time, the city of Hawthorne firmly recognized and takes great pride in acknowledging Kevin Ramsey for the achievement and contributions as a great member of the community and the city of Hawthorne. We take pride in recognizing your achievements on February twenty second, twenty twenty two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Councilman Montero, would you like me to read the second approximation, or would you like, uh, Kevin to say a few words first?
Let's say, uh, let's Kevin say a few word, uh, but before he goes, if you were to have to acknowledge that, uh, Mr. Alaric Simon, uh, would, uh, a Holly Park resident and also the president of the Hawthorne Peter Lyons Club is the one who uh, brought me to these two gentlemen, so Kevin, um, thank you for being here tonight. It was a great honor to read your bio and to see how, you know, a product of the L A County and also from the city of Hawthorne, uh, you have become an outstanding achievement, so you are one of those so-called unsung heroes, so take over.
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, like to thank the city of Hawthorne, thank the mayor, the city council. An hour or two for, uh, you know, this proclamation, I appreciate it. You know, grew up right there in Hawthorne, went to Cimarron, you know, played at Holly Park, pop won at Hawthorne High School, you know, it's, it's Hawthorne was, was my, where I grew up. The, the city that I really cared about when, when we was, when I was a youngster, you know, now that I'm older, I did pass the bar exam, so I'm an attorney now, and, uh, I'd just like to just say thank you, I appreciate everything. You know, Alameda Construction, uh, we've been around for twenty-four years, uh, we worked on several major projects such as SoFi, we work at the airport right now, working at the Conrad, working at, at Metro, you know, on the, uh, regional connector. And so, we're working on a lot of the larger contract, uh, around the city. So, I ju- I just, I just appreciate it, I mean, be recognized is a wonderful thing, I just want to say thank you very much.
But, but thank you, and, uh, I'm pretty sure, you know, you are a role model for many, many, uh, young black individual that would become a hero like you, so thank you very much for all your effort.
You're welcome.
Any council member want to say anything?
Yeah, a couple words.
Go ahead, Mayor Proton.
Uh, Mr. Ramsey, I just wanna thank you for your example, right, uh, you know, stories like yours are stories that need to be told uh, more and more, right, in our community, uh, you know, one of the things that I always talked about as I, as I kind of grew up, went to college, was how I started discovering all these different career paths that nobody told me about when I was young. And even as I get older, I continue to kind of collect these different career paths that I can share with other people. And so, um, you know, you definitely appreciate hearing your story, and, uh, I'm gonna be able to share with more people. And so, you know, you're, you're kind of your example to continue to help people to, um, understand what is possible for them. Uh, you know, a lot of young black kids, uh, you know, of course, dream of being successful, but don't know, you know, what are the different pathways they can pursue. So, you appreciate your example, very inspired by you going back and, and getting your law degree and, and even passing the bar, I've always had a dream of, of, uh, studying law, um, and, uh, you know, you've kind of now reignited a little bit of a, hey, I might, after I finish with my, the current degree I'm doing, I might go back and.
Yeah, you should, you should, you should, for sure.
Thanks a lot.
You let me know, I can talk to, I went to University of West L A, which is in, uh, Inglewood. And, uh, I know the, the president of the law school, so.
I know that gentleman as well.
Oh, okay.
It's Bob Brown.
Yes, 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 yes.
That's awesome.
Councilmember, uh, English, and then Councilmember Valentine.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Ramsey, I'd just like to, um, give my congratulations and more importantly, acknowledgement for the the man that you are, and more importantly, the work that you've done to persevere and to, uh, do what you have done is remarkable, especially a man of color. Uh, I can't commend you enough, I give you kudos and I wish you well wishes. And it's good to know that, uh, a man such as yourself, uh, a black man, being able to have a, a business that you own and provide for jobs too many. And so, it just goes, um, on forward and forward and forward, and so, uh, again, congratulations and well wishes to you and your family, and job well done, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
Councilmember Valentine?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Ramsey, I'm so pleased to, uh, make your acquaintance tonight. Um, I have, uh, are you, are you a resident of Holly Park?
Oh, yeah, for sure, I mean, not, my mom still lives right there, I mean, in the same house, but I, I moved, I live in San Pedro right now.
Oh, okay, because I was wondering why I had never met you, because I live in Holly Park. And, um, and I was going to invite you to join the Holly Park Homeowners Association, but I see.
I can make sure my mom gets by there, she's been there since seventy-four, so.
Oh, well, make sure she joins, but anyway, I want to say congratulations to you. And, um, as the Mayor Protem said, uh, there are many paths to success, and you've chosen several of them, and and you seem to have, have done a good job where, in whichever path you've chosen. I congratulate you as a, uh, a, a, a man of, uh, as, as, as a, as a black American, as a man of color, and also as an American citizen, that, that you have, you have made certain that you pursued the American dream and, and have achieved so much. Congratulations to you and to your family and to your ability to be a role model for our children. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and before I forget, I want to thank my wife too, because she, she was there every step of the way.
And that's usually the case, that, that, uh, someone, you know, it's, you always need a support person behind you, whether it's the wife or a significant other, but somebody needs to be there pushing you on and helping, so. Thank you for recognizing your wife, that's very important.
Yeah, thank you. And, and Mr. Ramsey, if you can send us your, um, address, we can, uh, mail you this proclamation, or you can come by and pick it up, it's up to you. Okay.
Oh, Mr. Ramsey, I'd like to congratulate you as well, uh, uh, ditto to everything that my colleague said. Um, having grown up in the city of Hawthorne, I know how important the city of Hawthorne is to someone like you. Uh, being able to have, uh, gone to the schools, uh, played in the parks, have walked through the streets, gone to the Hawthorne Mall, and all the different things we have around. Yeah, it's, it's plain, it's pretty much, it was pretty darn fun back then. And, uh, to have gone to the point where you are, we, uh, commend you and we recognize you and we honor you today. So, congratulations, uh, we, we really feel, uh, your success. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, and it's a generational thing, because I have my son, he, he plays at Holly Park, Holly Park Baseball too.
Your high school was?
No, my son, he plays at Holly Park Base.
Yeah, and, and what was your high school again?
Uh, I went to Washington High School.
Washington, okay, St. Bernard's, I want to say, we love a lot of same people, all right?
All right.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a, a second approximation, I have a approximation honoring Tark Brock. Tark Brock went to Hawthorne High, Go Cougars, played baseball at Holly Park and grew up on Wilton Place. Mr. Brock had a successful major league career and currently is currently on staff with the Pittsburgh Pirates. Uh, Tark is an American former baseball professional player who currently transitioned to coaching. He began his professional career in the summer of nineteen ninety-one with the Bristol League. Brock originally was selected by the Tigers as an outfielder in his career days. He played nine seasons in the minors before making his major league debut, debut with the Cubs in two thousand. He appeared in thirteen games with Chicago in the year two thousand, making his first big league debut at the Tokyo Dome in Japan on March twenty ninth. He played in the Independent League Northern League in two thousand one and was named an All-Star Athlete. He is the first base coach for the Pittsburgh Pirates of the Major League Baseball Association. Um, an outfielder who batted and threw left-handed, he played part of the season in the M L B for the Chicago Cubs. Brock has coached in the M L B for the Houston Rock, the Houston Astros, excuse me for the basketball mistake, and San Diego Padres. He began his coaching career in two thousand six as a, as the hitting coach with the Raptors of the Dodger affiliate in the Pioneer League. For his major league career, Brock hit one sixty-seven, two for twelve, had four walks, four strikeouts, and stole, stole one base in two thousand six. Brock serves as a coach with the Raptors in two thousand fourteen. He is the first base coach for the Houston Astros and is also a part of the Los Angeles Dodgers organization as an outfield base running coordinator. At this time, the city of Hawthorne formally recognizes your efforts and great pride in acknowledging Tark Brock for his major league achievements and a member of the community of Hawthorne. We take great, great pride in acknowledging your achievements on February twenty second, two thousand twenty-two. Thank you.
Thank you, Vaughn. Is Mr. Brock is on, is on Zoom?
Yes, he is.
Yes. I am, thank you, uh, thank you to all the council members, mayors, like, thank you guys, uh, so much, the city uh, that I grew up in and hone my skills in. Uh, I want to thank my mom and dad, who are hopefully watching this, uh, who still live in the area, uh, where I played, my kids played at the park. Uh, I'm gonna thank my wife and my kids who've been on this journey with me for so long, uh, starting my thirty-first year, uh, in professional baseball here in just a couple days. Um, and there's so many fond memories of playing in that park, honing my skills, not just as, you know, a little leaguer, but also through high school and even after signing, going across the street on the major field, hitting the ball, uh, off the tee into the screen. Um, and it's just been a place where I look back on, where I, I learned a lot of tools of life, uh, you know, learn how to be a great teammate, learn how to take failure, learn how to grow, uh, work well with others. And it's a lot of memories, uh, that I have taken and a lot of guys that I played with that, when I put the jersey on in just a few days, I'm putting it on for Holly Park Little League, the Twins was my very first team, uh, putting it on for, you know, uh, uh, what's the league, uh, well, for Hawthorne High School as well. Um, and so, I, I just, I'm just thankful of this, um, you know, thank you guys for just acknowledging, as I always say, the kid from Holly Park that couldn't put a ball in a bat down and found his way on major league fields, uh, who has the best seat in the house every night to watch and coach and be a part of Major League Baseball and being able to help, uh, young kids, uh, nowadays achieve their dreams of going to school uh, by, you know, picking up a stick and throwing the ball and hitting and catching with it. Uh, so thank you guys so much, I appreciate it, and thank you to Alaric. Uh, man, uh, this has been a long time coming, uh, but I'm grateful and no better time than, than right now.
So, I know, thank you, uh, Mr. Brock, because, uh, you know, your story i- is an outstanding story, right? Uh, but a kid, you know, playing, you know, legal, legal league baseball in Holly Park, and I have gone to all these big organizations. And as we struggle, right, uh, to, to be, uh, the same level equity and, and, uh, all these things that have happened, but, um, my hat goes off to you because you are a role model for many, many kids, especially, you know, the right here in Hawthorne, Holly Park, you know, because we, I think in this area, we have about thirteen different little leagues, right? That, uh, and, um, and, um, a few of them have gone and have been successful, so your story is an inspiration, and that is what we need to do, you know, to, um, give dues to those people that have make, make it happen for, for our children. And will continue to happen, because we still, uh, as a coach, uh, in a high league, so, uh, thank you very much for your story, and, uh, I'm glad that we highlight, uh, all you and, uh, and, and Mr. Kevin, uh, Ramsey, uh, because you guys two outstanding African-American that have made the history of the United States, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that, thank you.
We'll go in reverse this time, uh, Councilmember Valentine, then Councilmember English, and then Mayor Protem.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So, um, Mr. Brock, it's, it's a pleasure to make your acquaintance. And I just want to say that, um, it's, it's inspirational to me, because when I go to visit the little league, and I always go to speak with them. And whenever I go to speak with them, I say things like, you're learning character and team building, and you're learning healthy competition. And all of these things will carry you through life, but I didn't have anyone to show them that I was actually telling the truth. And you are a living example of what we say to those kids all the time. Remember to, you know, to, to follow your coaches, to do what they say, and to learn, and this will teach you the skills you need to be a great citizen. And I think that is, you, you are an amazing example of that, thank you so much for coming. Um, congratulations to all of your, for all of your achievements. Um, and, and you too have achieved the American's dream, good for you. I, I know you've had many obstacles to, to, to push through, and I, and I'm, I'm just so pleased that you recognize that the, the, the skills you learned as a little boy have carried you this far. So, thank you for coming back to us, and thank you for providing a role model for our children. And I'd like to invite you to, if you haven't already done so, have you gone, come back to the Holly Park Little League to speak to them?
I have, I have not, I would definitely love to.
Would you like to do that? I, I, I think we can make that happen, I'd love to see that happen. So, please, um, provide, uh, Councilmember Montero with your, with your information, and we'll be in touch with you, I'll, I'll make sure that, that we, we make sure that you get to speak to those kids, they would love to hear from you.
Thank you, that, that would be an honor, and the one thing that we, we forget about Little League is that it's community. And if there was fathers that were, that were coaching you, and the same lessons that they were teaching, you know, their kids, that you got taught as well, that you never gave up. Right, all those cliches that you hear on movies were being taught while you're on the baseball field as a little kid, and I was one of them, was crying because we lost the game. Uh, there was things that we had to learn, which is being tough, and we talk about mental toughness, you know, lose a couple games and, you know, have to get back up, and after striking out, uh, you learn mental toughness really quick, and I learned that right there on, you know, on the diamonds there at Holly Park Little League, so I'm, I'm grateful, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, yeah, Council, Councilmember English, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Brock, it's, uh, great to make your acquaintance. Uh, I'm actually quite surprised, I have lived in the city some thirty-five years, and I had no idea that we have before us a major league baseball player in our presence, and, uh, it's good to see that, uh, your career is not only one that is, uh, of, of great inspiration, but more importantly, being recognized here this evening by the city council and, uh, your peers, I'm sure that's, uh, probably tuning in and your family watching. Uh, it's good to, to see you, it's good to know, uh, that you're in Hawthorne, and more importantly, you're engaged with the community and those, uh, who you ultimately mentor and they look up to you, so I commend you, congratulations for what you're doing, um, and more importantly, uh, perseverance, right? Perseverance through, uh, the struggle, and more importantly, just press, pressing through. And I think that's, uh, what we're, we're most proud of, and I know that's something that you're proud of, uh, only you could tell your story. And so, it's just good to, to have you both here today on, um, the history, uh, February being Hit Black History Month, and it's good to know that, um, you know, gentlemen, men like you are, um, not only persevered, but continue to push through. And, uh, you're an inspiration to all, so congratulations to you, sir, and your wife and your family as well, so, um, I hope all is well, and that you could ultimately sometime come back to the city when we have events and functions and, and be present, so that, again, we could just, uh, embrace all that you have done, uh, in Major League Baseball, but more importantly, in the community that you serve, thank you so much.
Thank you, we thank you so much, thank you, I love that.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, is it, is it Brock your last name?
Yes.
So, Mr. Brock, I, I want to, uh, tell you how big of a deal, I, you know, it is for me to hear somebody, uh, achieve their dream. Um, I think that there's no better pursuit for your life than to pursue your dream. And you're kind of like, you're, it's almost like cheating when you get to get, get paid to do something that you love, um, something that, that, you know, that's fun for you anyway, and I, I think that's something that we all aspire to, right, it's a life that we all aspire to have, and I definitely appreciate your example and just showing people that, you know, that's possible, you know, you have a great story of, that you can teach people of what needs to be done to, uh, realize a dream. You know, oftentimes, you know, we have a dream and we kind of get lost and maybe find a new dream or create a new dream, but, uh, you know, it, it takes perseverance, it takes hard work, it takes, uh, you know, um, being let down at times and all, all these different things, and, you know, I'm sure that you, you've mastered a lot of important life lessons, so definitely, um, I appreciate having your story that I can tell the people here in Hawthorne. And, um, you know, want to continue, continue to encourage you to tell your story to the people as well.
Well, thank, thank you so much, and, uh, yes, like, uh, we talk about dreams, you know, uh, you gotta fight for your dream, fight to maintain it, and then when it's time, fight to let it go, because it's something that you, you've done for your whole time, but, uh, hopefully, the most important thing about, uh, living in your dream or living out your dream is that, uh, it blesses others, uh, and uplift others and inspire others, uh, to go further and do more than what you've done, and to see that, you know, there's someone out there that looks like you, that comes from the same place that you come from, and that is out there doing it, and just provide a little bit of inspiration. And then hopefully, we can have our, our fingerprints on, on the next generation of, of leaders, uh, you know, for our community, so thank you guys so much.
And, uh, sir, I'd like to join my colleagues in congratulating you also. Um, there's so many life lessons, I'm pretty sure that, uh, if you talk to the Holly Park Little Leaguers or students here in the city, or the youth, that you could pass along to, um, you know, that, uh, one of the lessons that I think of some of us and maybe even yourself uh, has had is that, you know, it, you don't always get it on the first try, it's repeat, repeat. You fall, you try, you get back up, fall, you get back up, and then with persistence and a lot of energy and a lot of, uh, faith in yourself, uh, you have achieved some great things, and you're proved positive that. And you're proved positive that, uh, good, hard work gets you somewhere. And so I'm proud of you. Our, our City Council's proud of you. Our community's proud of you. And we commend you on your successes. And congratulations on this honor that, uh, that you've received. And you're honoring us uh, with successes and giving back to the community, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I, I, I appreciate it. Uh, it couldn't be more true. You know, there's ups and, and downs. But all you have to do is get back up one more time. Um, and that was the, the thing. It just continued to get back up. And, you know, people might say overnight success, but it, it took me quite a few years, uh, to make it to the major leagues and then to make it back, uh, again. And so you get back, you, you hold on to it. Uh, as they say, ride the wave out. And so I'm, I'm just thankful, uh, it, it took listening to coaches, uh, having a great support system, uh, people that will tell you the truth, uh, not just, you know, pat you on the back. You're all right. Um, and, you know, learning how to handle, uh, adversity, adversity. So, uh, again, thank you guys so much and, and I'm proud, uh, you know, so I played at Holly Park Little League and to have played and graduated and, you know, getting drafted out of Hawthorne High School. Uh, I think it's the, the coolest thing because before all we had was the Beach Boys and, you know, and, and Curtis Conway. And hopefully I can just join in, uh, with that group that inspires others as well. So thank you guys so much.
Uh, I, Mr. Mayor, uh, I just want to say thank you to the both gentlemen, Mr. Brock and, uh, and, uh, Mr. Ramsey. And I want to invite you because, you know, Hawthorne is turning one hundred year, right? It's our centennial. On, on, um, July nine, we're gonna have a parade on the, down on Hawthorne Boulevard to the City Hall. I would love to see you, uh, Mr. Brock and, uh, Ramsey, if you can join us for that parade on July nine, um, two thousand twenty-two, then when we celebrate our centennial. So, uh, you will be our guest of honor. I appreciate it.
I'll be there.
All right.
All right. Uh, I'm not sure. We'll probably be playing somewhere. Hopefully win in a game. Uh, but again, you guys give my, my, my full support.
You can send me your jersey, then I'll swear it. All right, guys. Thank you very much. It's very special day, you know, special very month, Black History Month. Today is February twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two. If my dad was alive, he would have been a one hundred year. Uh, he was kind of like one of the first, uh, skipper, you know, working in, in the Dutch Navy. Uh, so, uh, like I said, you know, we grew up, you know, in Africa and we went to all around the world to make our dreams. So I understand per- perfectly what's going on. And thank you for both of you for being, uh, our heroes here in the City of Hawthorne. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Councilman Montero. Think about this, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, next we have our second presentation. Councilmember Valentine, please proceed, uh, discussing the Sentinel Youth Services.
Yes, um, so Sentinel Youth Services, um, I believe we have the Executive Director, Jessica Ellis with us. This is an organization which the City of Hawthorne belongs to. Um, restorative justice and youth development. Um, I'm very proud to be a, a member of the board. And, um, I think, uh, Ms. Ellis is here to, um, to request your support and I fully support it. So, uh, Ms. Jessica Ellis, please go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Valentine. Um, and I also would like to invite to come on screen Martha Sardinas, who's one of our volunteers, who's a resident of Hawthorne. Um, and I have a short little presentation to share more about our services and some stories about, um, how we support the residents of Hawthorne. Um, Eric, what's the best way to share the PowerPoint? Ah, I see it now. Thanks. Um, okay, so, um, and we'll get to hear from, um, from Martha as well. So, um.
Jessica, we don't have it in full screen. Would you like me to play it for you?
Yeah, that'd be great. It's giving you some problems on this end.
I'll play it right now.
Thanks. Thank you, Eric. You can go to the next slide. So, uh, Sentinel Youth Services, we've been around for forty-six years. And, uh, serving initially the Sentinel Valleys. We were chartered essentially by the cities of Inglewood, Hawthorne, Longdale and Gardena to serve young people and their families in need in the area. We specialize in kids, teenagers, generally between the ages of, you know, kind of preteen from about nine, ten up to eighteen, who are getting in trouble and work to get services in place to identify what's going on and help address that. And, um, uh, you can go to the next slide, Eric. Um, so we work a lot with the Hawthorne Police Department. I want to acknowledge, uh, Chief Ishi and his team are fabulous partners. And we work with young people, um, both who've come in contact with law enforcement and are diverted into our services, um, to be able to address the behavior, um, without adding a criminal record that could really hold them back for life for things that really can be a mistake in, in our youth. Um, and we do a lot of prevention work and take referrals from the schools as well. So our programming includes, uh, counseling and referral services with no eligibility barriers. So any family in the City of Hawthorne that has a need, um, for any of their children, either connections to therapy or substance abuse treatment, or just need to get connected into some, uh, activities to get a better group of peers, whatever the needs are, needs housing, et cetera. We'll figure it out and help connect them with no fees, um, and just offer help. So anybody in the city can refer for that. Um, and then for young people who've committed a crime, we work with them through restorative justice in meeting with the victim of that crime to make things right directly and to work out restitution. And I'll talk about that a little bit more in a second. And then we also do family mediation for parents and teens in conflict. And I'll share one of those stories. Um, and then in intensive case management for kids with high needs. Okay, next slide. So I want to play this very short. It's just a three-minute video to explain what restorative justice is because that's a big part of what we do and a big part of, um, the volunteers that get involved with us. So when folks to understand what this is, we'll just play this real quick.
You know what? I, I wasn't able to play this earlier. I didn't know if it was a video or not. So it won't, it won't play on my end.
Oh, okay. Um, maybe we can see if we can swap screens or?
Okay, let me go ahead and stop and you play it.
Yeah, I gotta get sound. This is not. Sorry about that.
The sound might work if you keep, if you take your earphones out.
Um, we're gonna share sound. It is not working. Sorry, folks. Um, totally worked on my test run. Uh, swear prepared, but, um, uh, Eric, you better take over again. So we'll skip that. I'll just tell a story to illustrate what restorative justice is. So restorative justice, um, and we'll send a link to it for folks that want to learn more. So restorative justice is, um, works with someone who's committed a harm of some sort. Um, and it provides an opportunity for the person that created that harm to sit down with the person that they harmed and, um, learn about the impact to their actions and find a way to make things right. And a great example of this, we had a case where, uh, a young person had stolen computers from the school. And the case, because it had been a high dollar amount of theft, went on to the court system and it was not offered a restorative justice opportunity. Um, went through the normal court process and the court ordered the young person to pay restitution. He came from a family that was very impoverished. They, they're, they couldn't even put food on the table. They were not going to be able to pay restitution back to the school. Um, and so the young person was put on probation in order to do hundred and fifty hours of community service. They were made to do, um, several, um, classes of various sorts, attend therapy, et cetera. Um, but the probation officer couldn't get the kid off of probation. He was on probation for five years for this offense. Um, but he couldn't get him off probation because the kid could not afford to pay restitution. And the victim was still very mad and the school principal, and she wanted a thousand dollars in restitution. So, um, the case was finally, five years later, referred to us. And we brought the parties to the table. The principal was so mad. She said, I don't want to come unless you can guarantee I'm gonna get a thousand dollars. And we explained, we can't guarantee that, but you can come and you're welcome to ask for that and we'll negotiate and see what happens. When they arrived, the young man, um, he did this when he was thirteen. He was now almost eighteen. Um, and we had him speak first and he immediately, it was clear that he felt so bad about this. This had been his school. He had bonded with that principal. They knew each other. Um, and even though it was five years later, the guilt was really clear. And once she saw that, all of her anger melted. Um, and she shared how much this kid had meant to her and how hurt she had felt by this. Um, and suddenly, all talk of money went out the window and she was fine with a letter of apology. Because really what restorative justice does is it provides that opportunity for emotional healing for folks involved. Um, and to reconnect. And oftentimes, kids are committing crimes and harms in their own neighborhoods, um, or with people they know, and we can repair those relationships. When we just order community service or lock kids up, we sever relationships and we don't really solve the problem. And so this way, they were able to repair that relationship and she mentored him through, um, finishing his high school degree. So that's what's possible through restorative justice. And in Hawthorne, we, um, train community volunteers to facilitate that discussion between young people and the person that they've harmed. You can go to the next slide, Eric. Thanks. Um, and a big part of the way we do that is we work with Hawthorne Police Department and also with the local courts to, um, divert young people out of the traditional justice process and into restorative justice, which has been shown to still meet the victim's needs. And it's much more effective at lowering recidivism so the young person won't commit crimes and hurt other people again. And this is important because a single arrest, even if there's no conviction in court, with kids under eighteen, it's, research has found the arrest itself is harmful. Um, and even when there's no conviction, a single arrest can make a kid seven times more likely to experience adult unemployment and welfare dependence. You can go to the next slide. Um, and kids' brains are just different. This top half is the adult brain on impulse control and the bottom half is, uh, twelve-year-old's brain on impulse control. There's a big difference. Kids do things that are dumb and risky and they don't think ahead, things that to the rest of us would be obvious. How come you didn't think about the consequences of what would happen when you did that? Literally the little muscles in their brains for thinking ahead aren't quite there yet. Um, and each kid is on a different trajectory of that development. And the more trauma a child has, the more impaired their impulse control and ability to think ahead to consequences. And restorative justice helps build that second, segment of the brain. And it's been shown in brain scans to help build empathy in kids' brains. You can go to the next slide. So we work in Hawthorne with the police department, also with the local sheriff's department, which provides, um, policing at the, um, couple of your schools in this, um, Sentinel, um, Valley School District. And also take referrals for young people in Hawthorne through probation, the district attorney and the public defender. Um, and also through our school districts. Next slide. And there's a big difference. Our programming is really effective in reducing youth crime. So these are direct comparisons between young people with the same demographics, same crime types going through the justice system versus going through CYS programs. Kids in the justice system that experience confinement or detention, recidivism goes up much higher. Confinement is actually bad for kids. Um, we need other alternatives that help protect community and change that behavior. So, uh, kids have been prosecuted in court. Two-thirds of them have been prosecuted before. So seeing the inside of a courthouse didn't do anything to change that behavior. Um, so our kids that are at, where it says CYS ERJC, that's our higher risk, higher needs kids. Kids with offenses that likely would have seen a courtroom. Um, and you can see a big drop in, uh, recidivism. So just about eleven percent will commit a new crime a year later versus sixty-six percent. Um, and for lower risk kids, um, it's less than eight percent. Whereas had they been put on informal probation, it's more like twenty to thirty percent recidivism. Next slide. Uh, and here's our family mediation program, looking at, um, uh, about six months later, how they were doing, um, and big drops in, um, further discipline issues at school or justice, justice system contact. Next slide. Um, and we get high rates on victim satisfaction. Ninety-eight percent, um, of victims that participate rate the process as fair and equitable and met their needs. Um, and kids rate the process as fair as well, um, meaning fair and equitable. Um, next slide. So, um, I want to share one more quick story and then turn it over to Martha to share a little bit about what it's like to be a volunteer. And these are some of our volunteer opportunities. Um, we had a family with a young person who attended the Sentinel Valley School District. Um, and, uh, he was fourteen, freshman, and he had suffered serious trauma as a younger child. Um, he'd been the victim of sexual abuse. Um, and oftentimes with kids, that trauma when they're younger starts coming out as behavior issues once they hit their teen years. So once he hit about thirteen, fourteen, he became really defiant with his parents. His grades tanked. They were terrible. And he was ditching school, um, and really heading down the wrong pathway. And, uh, his parents came for help. They were divorced, but were cooperating, uh, with each other on co-parenting. And we, our volunteers that are trained to do family mediation and, um, worked with them over multiple sessions. And we later got a letter from the family and the mom, I'll just read you a little portion of her letter. She said, "When we first came to you, we were at the end of our rope with little hope. We were miserable parents. Nobody likes being told what to do and you never did that. You gave us the tools to be parents. You gave us homework and good things would come of it. There are no words to thank you enough. I had to show you." And she sent pictures of his grades, which were now As and Bs. And she sent pictures from their family dinners that they now do once a month, uh, which they had not been doing. Um, and now it's become a tradition that they do these family dinners. So, um, yeah, just a little bit of a story there. So Martha, I want to turn it over to you.
I'm sorry, turn truck, but you have, uh, two to three minutes left.
Okay, perfect. Thanks. Oh, Martha, you're on mute.
Those two or three minutes are for me. Dr. Jimenez?
Yes, they are.
Okay. I'll pretend I'm on a news show where they give you forty-five seconds. Um, I'd like to introduce myself very briefly. I'm a resident of Hawthorne. And, uh, it's one of the best things I ever did to move here. And, uh, because of Hawthorne government's great outreach, I've had the opportunity to meet, uh, Mayor Vargas and Councilmember Valentine and also, uh, Chief Ishi, who I believe is on the, is on the line. So, uh, I am retired from the federal government and I'm a certified mediator, but I'm not alone in that. I know a lot of people listening here are also mediators. So I volunteer with Sentinel Youth Services. And the way we do our work is that we navigate, uh we have a session, a discussion. It's usually two hours with the youth offender and the family and a victim. And the goals in this process are to help the youth more deeply consider his actions and show some responsibility by repairing the damage that he's caused or she has caused. And finally, we come up with a restitution agreement that's realistic and something that his case manager at Sentinel Youth Services and his parents can help him to complete. Um, I think uh CYS, from my experience doing these mediation, is helping the community. Uh, we feel we're, we should be helping the police and the courts as well. Uh, and the families of the youth to achieve meaningful amends for their crimes. So uh most of them are first-time offenders, most of them, many forty-nine percent. Uh, Jess, Jessica and I were discussing are Hispanic and sixty percent are boys. So I'm Hispanic and I'm the mother of two boys, which I think right there qualifies me for these discussions. Um, I always tell the youth in the discussions that they're, that I'm their neighbor. And um the presence of the parents is very powerful. Uh, the parents are really the moral compass of the discussions. And when the victims are present, it's very powerful. So I have found this to be uh a method that truly works. And I guess I don't have time for stories, but um, so I'll end there. Is that okay?
Thank you.
You want to close that out, Councilwoman Valentine?
Yes, well, I would like to close it out by saying that um uh I have a discussion action item. I wonder if we could consider it now. And my discussion action item is financial support for Sentinel Youth Services. Um, they made a financial request for twelve thousand six hundred dollars. Uh, amounting, which is amounted to a hundred dollars per Hawthorne participant. And I'd like to make a motion, can I, can I combine my discussion action items since it's already on the agenda, Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. City Attorney, is it true that we need to have our communications first?
Um, no, we could, we could just, if, if this is agreeable with the majority of the council, I think we could just do it right now.
Well, first of all, we need to check with the city clerk to see if there has been any calls with regards to that specific item. Uh, Mr. City Clerk, have there been any calls?
Um, uh, no, we haven't received any item, any calls for that specific item at this time.
Mr. City Attorney, what if a call comes in related to that specific item?
Um, if you want, you could wait till after the oral communications in case there is a call, but uh
Let's uh, just, just to be consistent with what we've done in the past, let's um do that one first, if everybody's okay with that. Is everybody okay with that?
All right, that, uh
Yeah.
All right.
Yes.
In any case, um, thank you so much for bringing that discussion to us. Um, I just want to add a personal item. I have, um, I've been on the board for several years. And before that, I was a, I was trained as a mediator. I was, I am a mediator, a certified mediator, but I was trained first at CYS. And I can say that it was the best mediation experience I have ever had because your mediators are, your mediation training is exceptional. And um the volunteers and the, the families get so much out of it. It's such a pleasure. When you can see that families that were dysfunctional before are able to learn to communicate. I did the FARS mediation. I haven't done FORS, but I did the FARS training. And it's, it's, it's just a joy to watch that the change as, as you do mediation over the period of time. Watch the change happen in the families and watch them begin to come together and begin to communicate with each other. It's just a pleasure to watch. So I want to congratulate CYS on the job that you do with our young people. And um, thank you so much for coming tonight. Uh, do you have any things that you'd like to say as a closing remark?
No, thank you for giving us the time and the consideration. We're proud to serve Hawthorne.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Um, just stand by so that you could be around for that item once we go ahead and vote for it. Right after oral communications, Mr. City Clerk?
Yes. Pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five four point three, all remarks shall be addressed to the city council as a body, not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report and/or recommendation. Uh, Mr. Mayor, we received no emails regarding public comments for tonight's agenda. We have six speakers tonight for oral communications.
Mr. City Clerk, what is the result? What are the consequences if somebody directs comments directly to our city uh officials?
We'll have to continue to interrupt them to let them know that they need to make their remarks to the entire body.
Go ahead. Thank you.
So uh Diana has the first speaker.
Okay, our first speaker is Mr. Doug Choski. Hi Doug, are you there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead. You have three minutes.
All right, thank you. First of all, I'm glad we're celebrating Black History Month. Uh, I heard some wonderful stories. So that was really nice. Um, the reason I'm calling is I was lucky enough to make some comments about my feeling about not wanting to approve marijuana dispensaries in Hawthorne. And um I made the comments about how petitions that I helped circulate were so enthusiastically taken. And then the um crime rate is going to increase if we do it. So to the first issue, um later on in that, in the meeting, I heard that Councilmember English took a look at the petitions that were turned in by, by the organization, I guess. And she doubted their veracity, um, because there were emails and no addresses, things like that. Well, I know I signed it. And I also literally know that at least ten signatures on there on my street. Um, I know who those people were and who signed it, um, and then how many more on the street. So I know the neighborhood a hundred percent was against it. So bottom line is, if, if there's any question about how the people of Hawthorne feel, I think we ought to take a vote on it, a legitimate ballot vote. And then the second issue, um, on the crime increase, um, Council, Councilmember Montero uh mentioned that one of the reasons he wants to go ahead with, with authorizing dispensaries is because um, that will allow us to gain a lot of funds from taxation so that we can fight crime when the cities around us um have the dispensaries and that crime starts to dissipate into Hawthorne. Well, the logic to that is if we, if we allow dispensaries in Hawthorne, we're gonna be creating Hawthorne as the center of a crime surge. Um, so I don't understand that at all. So my, my bottom line is, I, I just, I think the way to solve this or get a final answer is just put it on a ballot, a legitimate paper ballot next election and see how the people of Hawthorne really feel about this. Cause from what I saw in my neighborhood, there ain't no doubt about it. So thank you for your time and I appreciate it and I'm, I'm, I am done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Lethal Williams. Ms. Williams, you have three minutes.
Good evening, City of Good Neighbors, Lethal Williams here, and happy, happy Black History Month. And a rare day, the second of, the February, which is the second month, the twenty-second date in year two thousand twenty-two. We won't see that again for the next four hundred years. However, I wanted to address that we, the City of Hawthorne really didn't take advantage of uh a once, once-in-a-lifetime thing for our wonderful council that we have to implement more things for this Super Bowl that just hit our town. To have a sign up on Imperial in Hawthorne Boulevard, a Good Neighbor sign to light up the city. But nevertheless, some people don't know that we did take a part in it, a small part. Our police presence was right there at SoFi every single morning of the preparations for this Super Bowl. And, and, and I'm quite sure Chief Ishi have heard that there is one lady that always lifted up the City of Hawthorne when they saw the police uh presence there in the barriers every morning as the preparation hit. And it was a wonderful time to bring back a taste of Hawthorne. The N S L League would have given the city monies to participate, even with banners on our street signs. However, that leaves us. Election time is coming. Please, community, the good, City of Good Neighbors, get your election thoughts in mind. It takes a lot of people to run. You gotta be a blessing. If you're not being a blessing to others, some have been sitting on this council too long, too long. It has been too comfortable. But this is a wonderful city and to touch with uh Dicky's barbecue place, see some signs as up there for hiring. That means that the doors are opening up soon. Please, don't be discouraged with our community. And there was some private jets that landed for the Super Bowl at our airport with one wonderful councilperson bringing that up and putting that definitely into action. Please, we have all the space that you need to make this city pop and run. There are too many boarded up buildings in our community. And I have a dream. I have a dream that our city, all those boarded up buildings and everything will be brought down. What's again, happy Black History Month. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. You have a good night. Diana has the next speaker. Oh, just uh, we just want to make sure that um she's aware of that, just to mute herself when she's speaking to the callers coming in, just.
Yeah, I went ahead and spoke to her already about it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, our next speaker is Mr. Raymond Vergara. Hi, Mr. Vergara. Are you there? Okay, go ahead. You have three minutes.
I'm speaking to make a response to the comments that were expressed in your February eighth meeting as to the hundred and twenty-four signatures collected by the residents of this city. These are actual families that live in our community and will be impacted by your cannabis dispensation. We have our own opinions about locating cannabis retailer in the city and are really sticking to our feelings, regardless if you agree or disagree with us. I won't comment on the inappropriate remark that was, that the signatures are fake because it reflects on the person making the comment. The residents of Hawthorne feel that they will be immediately impacted because cannabis retail will be in their backyard. We are aware that the cannabis lobby is pushing this because there is a big and significant campaign money involved in local officials to bring cannabis to the city. And again, money is the driving force behind the city's six hundred thousand dollars cannabis consultant, which we still have not seen or heard the consultant justification for her fee. And by the way, what is her real name? Is it Ebony McGee or Ebony Anderson? Either way, her fee is being funded by taxpayer money. We've only heard um conclusive statements that the revenue from cannabis applicants will reimburse the city for six hundred thousand dollar liability. No explanation on how many years that will take. They essentially see community input on cannabis businesses, but they have inserted an unnecessary bureaucratic layer into the public outreach process. Instead of showing up, residents are being told that they now need to register in advance. If they are concerned that hundreds of residents may attend and block the idea of cannabis retail is a registered process, nothing more than a barrier to allow Hawthorne residents to speak about their opinions on cannabis businesses and the negative impact on our children. Furthermore, who originally negotiated the contract with EJ, EJ MA Planning and Development Inc. In February tenth meeting, McGee or Anderson was vague about what she does and her other business. What she failed to mention is that she also has her own cannabis retail store. Why was she so secretive about disclosing that information and why did she not share this information in the video for the community to hear after all, it's a marijuana store who promotes the J C marijuana brand? Or why did she not disclose that this was done at the, at the City of Commerce in two thousand nineteen? The article titled Red Is Outside Cannabis Money Influencing Commerce City Council Race? According to the author, Anderson, like Pharaoh, had no experience in cannabis, listing her current job as a network marketing salesperson for a cosmetic jewelry company.
Thirty seconds.
She worked for Megan. Who makes the decision to recommend the hiring of her on the city's consent calendar? Be advised, our, our opinions will certainly reflect in the November's election. This whole cannabis program is a farce. Deny Mayor Vargas, Ms. Valentine, and Lady.
Thank you, sir.
Please. Next, we have Ms. Lisa Aguilar. Ms. Aguilar, you have three minutes.
Buenas noches, alcalde, alcalde Rargan y miembros del consejo. Me llamo Lisa Aguilar, soy residente de Hawthorne. Y llamo para ponerme una nueva, una vez más a las tiendas de cannabis de, en la ciudad de Hawthorne. Estoy muy decepcionada de la representación que nos han dado hasta el día de hoy. Toda la mala información que han presentado a la comunidad. Los residentes de nuestra comunidad merecen más. En la junta pasada, el ocho de febrero, tuvieron el sí mismo de insinuar que las firmas que hemos colectado son, no son auténticas. Esto habla de la propia moralidad de la concejal Angie English.
Please address the board and not a single person.
Como se crees en insultar a los residentes de Hawthorne, estas son familias verdaderas que se verán afectadas en nuestra ciudad de Hawthorne por las proposiciones a las tiendas de cannabis para vender marihuana en esta ciudad. Hemos sido, hemos sido claros. Actualmente no hay tiendas de cannabis en la ciudad de Hawthorne. Nuestra comunidad no ha agotado por esto. Es una vergüenza pública que se hemos representado por todos estos malos informes. Sin embargo, tres miembros del consejo de la ciudad están en el proceso de aprobar todos los votos necesarios para implementar y emitir permisos de cannabis. El concejal de la ciudad, usted ha visto, se ha visto advertido recientemente en la ciudad de Huntington Park por Hughes Media Group comunidad. Las, las noticias han obtenido una queja presentada en dos mil diecisiete por varios dispensarios de marihuana medicinal en el tribunal del Distrito de los Estados Unidos, alegando su abono conspiración, conclusión contra la ciudad de Huntington Park. La visa alcaldesa de Huntington Park, Karen Macia, y los miembros del consejo de la C L P y Marila Enchanabria. No jueguen con nuestro futuro. Exigimos un alto inmediato de su programa de investigación de cannabis y desarrollo de cannabis. Primimos las ventas en tiendas de marihuana también conocidas como dispensarios de cannabis y negamos profundamente las tiendas de na, de cannabis en nuestra ciudad. Si es necesario ir de puerta por puerta a colectar más firmas si es necesario para que escuchen nuestra oposición. Son residentes de Hawthorne. No, por favor, no representen con mala información. Todo ha sido disímio de nuestra parte de la comunidad de Hawthorne. Buenas noches.
And then just. Diana has the next speaker. Mr. City Clerk, just advise some of the speakers sometime, that we don't have any translation services and we're not set up to do that in the future in case you're, no ahead of time, okay?
Yeah, we weren't aware that she was gonna be speaking.
Yeah, I mean, it's their choice.
Yeah.
Diana has the next speaker.
Okay, our next speaker is Diana Cass. Ms. Cass, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Who am I talking to?
Um, the city council.
Okay, so yeah, I've been a resident here in Hawthorne for five years. Um, well, they came to the city talking about this cannabis stuff. You know, they tried to have them in um this city and I just don't think it's a good idea. Um, pretty much I just don't allow that because, you know, it, I mean, we already have high crime uh violent things going on in this city. I mean, it's already enough. But, you know, people are going through here, so I just don't really allow this for it to happen. I just really don't approve for the shops to even be there, be here in Hawthorne at all.
Okay, is that all?
Um, pretty much.
Okay, thank you for your call.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
And our last speaker tonight is Ms. Lily Fernandez. Um, Ms. Fernandez, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Hi, yes. Good afternoon, mayor and council members. Lily Fernandez here, lifelong resident of Hawthorne City. I have a unique business-related parking issue. I allow I have a unique business-related parking issue I would like to address today. Right before street sweeping ends, employees from all the shops park many of their customer vehicles on residential streets. More often than not, they are barely running or only partially reassembled. I'm sure most have fake license plates or tags. They usually, I'm sorry, let me get somewhere because I can hear myself. They usually leave these vehicles until, well, I'm sure there's more that fake license plates or tags. They usually leave their vehicles until the following street sweeping day. This adds to the already difficult and unique parking problems we already have here in Hawthorne. It's already nearly impossible to find a parking space as most residents must park up to a quarter mile away from their own home. With no ordinance followed by enforcement, to regulate these activities, they are allowed to systematically exploit our residential parking area. We need new ordinances to be put placed in to keep up of these exploits or so-called hacks. This should not be happening in the city of good neighbors, quote unquote. I'm reaching out to you all, mayor and council members, too. Please see a proper investigation that is conducted and publicized a relation to any residents. Just make them sign and leave a little tiny manner, particularly before any more chaos is created, especially the six hundred apartments of Chicken Creek. The R S K owner developer has proposed two subparly commission. This only benefits developers and city officials through campaign donations. Set your goals to protect the community and not campaign donations. Let's not forget our campaign promises. After all, reelection is around the corner. Show your community you are for Hawthorne. Thank you for your invaluable time and effort. Just put your great issue has stood through the cracks for long enough. Hawthorne, city of good neighbors. Thank you for your time. Good night.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez.
All right, thirty seconds starts now.
About now. Okay, thank you, Mr. City Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I'd actually uh like to bring uh something up. Would it be okay if I brought up, it's regarding public comments?
Um, yes, go ahead. Um, this is uh jumping to the, or is it something you'd like to present?
No, I think it's pretty important to bring up because it's pretty, it's relevant. Um, I just wanna make sure that I'm following um the proper uh protocol, the code section. So I want to ask our city attorney, uh Robert Kim. When it comes to, um, you know, I read that a person should not address a, you know, a person but a body. Does that mean if they even, if they even bring up their name, even though they're not addressing them, um, should we remind them? I just wanna make sure I'm, you know, respecting everybody and following protocol.
How about you ask them for a legal confidential that would address that, just so that we can study that?
I, I would prefer to do a legal confidential. There is a First Amendment right involved here and it's not as simple as, um, there are certain standards that we can restrict in the manner the oral communications are made by the residents. But there are countering uh First Amendment uh rights so that um, I would prefer to do a legal confidential for council members and I'll, if okay with the council members, I could share um some of the uh findings or the recommendations to the city clerk as well.
Thank you.
Is everybody in agreement that that uh legal confidential can be extended to the city clerk? Uh, Councilmember Valentine? Yes? Everybody thumbs up? Okay, sir. Um, on this one, uh, we're gonna extend that to you, okay, sir?
No, I appreciate that. I just wanna be, you know, I just wanna be transparent with everybody. I'm trying to be as objective as possible with this. Um, so I'm just trying to follow, follow protocol. Um, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thing, one thing I can tell you for sure is that when somebody attacks somebody, their arguments uh fall flat sometimes. So that's actually, doesn't favor the person that's attacking someone. Okay, so that, if that in itself is not good for that speaker, whoever the speaker is, not saying to anybody today. Think, but, uh, okay, thank you. Mr. City Clerk, your consent calendar, please, let's move forward.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, I have four items on the consent calendar. The items seven, eight, eleven, and twelve for your consideration and approval. Item seven, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and or ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item eight, city treasurer's request approval of the warrants. Item eleven, resolution number eight, three, three, four, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, approving an amendment of the solid waste franchise agreement between the city and allied waste services of North America. LLC DBA Republic Services and authorize the city manager to execute a fourth amended and restated franchise agreement. Item twelve, resolution number eight, three, three, seven, resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, approving a disposition, development and loan agreement with Encore Apartments LP for a nineteen unit low-income veterans housing project at four, one, four, one, one, five, Cordery Avenue for adoption.
I'd like to pull, I'd like to pull number eleven.
Right, pull number twelve with the special.
All right, eleven and twelve have been pulled. Eleven and twelve have been pulled. I make a motion on seven, eight, uh, oh. Good lord, how do you guys have these, or seven and eight? Okay? Approval of the waiver of full readers of resolutions and city treasurer requests approval of the warrants. I make a motion on those solely.
I second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Ernest English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
The law reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
I wanted to inter, interject point of order on this, not point of work, just a point of communication to all of you guys. Since we did promise that we were going to talk about the C Y A, I wanted to check that into the, uh, in here first. Uh, Councilmember Valentine, uh, financial support for Sentineli, what is your motion on that now?
Yes, so before I make the motion, I wanted to just give you just a little bit of background. So annually.
Um, go ahead. Try to summarize it as, as you can.
Pardon me?
Try to summarize it as tightly as you can, since we're interjecting.
It's very tight, it's very tight. Annually, uh, C Y S serves an average of a hundred and twenty-six youth. They're caregivers and offense impacted parties from Hawthorne. Service costs about twenty-six hundred dollars per participant and are primarily supported by grants. However, grants do not cover the full cost of quality services and annually underfund the program by about ten percent. So they are requesting twelve thousand five hun, twelve thousand six hundred dollars or one hundred dollars per participant annually, which will serve as an investment in transforming the lives and opportunities of youth and their families in Hawthorne. And I would move at this time for approval of an annual contribution of twelve thousand six hundred dollars to Sentineli, to Sentineli Youth Services for services they are already performing for the benefit of Hawthorne's children.
Discussion, for discussion.
Well, I have a quick question. I don't know if you're gonna ask this too. I sometimes, what's the source of money that you're suggesting? Is that what you're gonna ask? Kind of, what's the source?
I, I, I wanna know the feasibility and where's this coming from because, you know, if that's the case, there's a whole bunch of organizations that are in need for um monies, so.
Well, Councilwoman Valentine, what was the source of money? Uh, general funds?
What do you, what do you, was the source of money that they already receive or the source?
No, no, that for us to uh relate this over to them, was it the general funds or the specific account? Was it like some of the pairs act money? What were you looking at?
Well, actually, um, I think that would be kind of, it would be sort of up to the city, city manager to make that determination about where the money comes from. Um, but, uh, as far as, as far as the, the services they perform, they've already performed these services for years and have not received any contribution from us. They are asking for contributions from all the cities they serve. Um, so, um, you know, grant money doesn't cover everything that they need. And that's what I'm saying that, uh, th, th, this is not some, this is nothing, this is not something new that they're doing. They're already performing these services and have done so for many years.
Yeah.
To the chair.
Go ahead, and then Mayor Pro Tem. As long as you identify the part of money, then I'll be willing to go ahead and second that.
Yeah, city manager, city attorney, I'd like to see the, the item agendized for another meeting with uh full disclosure and information on feasibility and where the money's coming from. I think, uh, city manager, city attorney need to identify at least, uh, where, you know, how we're gonna manage this. It just can't be, you know, a vote this evening. There's a lot of questions that need to be answered, so. I'd like to see the item agendized and I'd like to see a, an agendized uh item with, um, description, just like any agendized item we have currently in our books.
Uh, can I, Pro Tem Patterson?
I mean, I agree. I would like to have this item agendized. Uh, I do have some que, a number of questions, comments, probably not uh most appropriate now, but uh, I mean, while we're talking about it, I know that Darren Capital, who made the acquisition of Millennial, had donated some money to the city of Hawthorne to give to some nonprofits. I, I would like a, a, I guess, more appropriate opportunity to discuss where the money's gonna come from. It sounds like it's a great organization, they do great things for the community, but also kind of weary about a lot of ad hoc approvals of money to organizations because we can, you know, have organizations come to every council meeting, uh, asking for money. Um, might, you know, might make sense to put it into the, the budget for the next fiscal year. So, I mean, I would like to see it agendized. Kind of really discuss in detail.
Mister, Mister City Manager, do you have a, a pot of money that you have identified for this?
No, I would request, uh, time to study this item to see exactly what the need is and where the source of, uh, funding would come from.
Okay, um, so it was valid questions. Nobody's saying no, and uh, I think a lot of people really wanna help um, these organizations, so, um, I guess, uh, can, uh, can we agendize this for the next meeting? The, the, can you have all the information ready for the next meeting, sir?
Yes, absolutely. I can do that.
Councilwoman Valentine?
Yes, that's fine.
Yeah, no, just, I mean, it's, it's valid points because like then everybody in the, I don't wanna say everybody in their family member is gonna come up and ask for stuff and everybody can't.
Yeah, but everybody is not pr, providing services to the, the stu, the children of Hawthorne, so. I mean, it, it's not like they're just any organization coming asking for money. They are actually performing services.
I mean, I, I don't wanna disagree with you, but Hawthorne is, has the highest concentration non, nonprofits probably in L A County. So, uh, there's a lot of people that wanna help, so. Um, but since it's gonna be put on the agenda, we're gonna discuss it in.
Yeah, and, uh, Mr. Mayor, I may ask, um,
Yes, go ahead.
if it's possible, also, uh, when we put on the agenda for the next meeting, uh, if it's possible for the, uh, youth, Sentineli Youth Service to provide us, uh, with their, um, financial statement. I'd like to see, you know, the, um, the financial statement, okay? Because since this money, uh, that, that Ms. Valentine was asking for annually, so it's not just one time.
Right.
So, so, uh, we need to see some type of a financial statement to see, um, about the revenues and the expenses, et cetera, et cetera, okay?
Um, yes, so, so that sounds good. I, I concur, and it's a serious commitment on our part that we wanna undertake. So, since it, I, I thought it was a one-time situation, to be honest with you.
No, but, uh.
If it's long-term?
Yeah, it is long-term. That's what I, and.
Thank you. So let's move, thank you. Uh, so let's move back to items number eleven and twelve. Discussion on eleven. Resolution eighty-three, thirty-four. Whoever, I'll pull that up. Go ahead.
Yes, that was mine. Uh, so, um, the contractor has set up an extensive program of compliance with the statute thirteen eighty-three, S B thirteen eighty-three. My question is, how will contractor oversight be done by the city to make certain this is all done as the contract requires?
For the chair, if, if possible, I'd like to call our public works director, Hallie Lang, to answer that question. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, uh, mayor and city council member. Um, we're gonna be working in partnership between, um, us Public Works and um, with Public Services. Um, we will, um, check on each other in addition. Uh, every year, we will have to provide report to Cal Recycle to make sure uh, the city is doing what we're supposed to do, um, to conduct the organic waste, uh, program, so. Um, the state will also be checking with the city to see what we are recycling and that we meet the requirement of the states.
Okay, and my second question is, or rather, it's a comment, that we have to make certain that the system includes a way for the businesses to contact someone when needed. A telephone number where someone is always available to answer their questions, someone to respond to email complaints, someone to respond to inquiries and provide direct assistance when needed. Has that been contemplated in the contract or is that, or, 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 um, or will you be able to do that?
Uh, yes, that is part of the program, part of the amendments. Uh, we will have outreach program and we will have educational program uh, conducted by the city, Public Works, and also by the Public Services. So that, that is part of the amendment to the contract.
Okay, but, and my, but my question is specific in terms of, I wanna make sure that, because this is a very complicated program. I just wanna make sure that when the businesses call, and I know they will, because they won't understand what to do, regardless of how much instruction you give, there will be some businesses who will have problems. They will not understand what to do. Who do they call and where are they going to get direct answers to their questions? Who do they call?
Um, they can either call the city or we can, they can also call the Public Services directly. Uh, we will have in, contact information, uh, posted on our website. Uh, and in addition, we Public Services will be reaching out to all the businesses uh, to answer any of their questions. So we, we will.
You're going to have a specific person in Public Works who's going to be monitoring this?
Uh, yes, we will.
Okay, and that will be, that will be published so the businesses know who they can contact?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion? Oh, is there a motion ready or?
I have a question. Excuse me, I have a question.
Uh, uh, Councilmember Valentine, you finished?
I was gonna make the motion.
Okay, um, well, we do have a comments.
Okay.
Uh, Councilwoman Valentine, I mean, uh, English, please?
Councilmember Montero, you wanna go ahead? You were, you had your hand up first.
Uh, go ahead, uh, uh, Miss, I'll go, I'll go second.
Then Councilman Montero, go ahead.
Uh, city attorney, uh, city manager, um, with the resolution and we're at, whereas, you know, the whereas, can we do by end in, end annihilation, uh, to include a resource contact phone number? Uh, either with Public Services, uh, where it speaks to, say, for instance, whereas, uh, the city and allied after meeting, conferring on terms and conditions, et cetera, put somewhere in there where it would have a direct, uh, contact phone number. I'm not trying to delay this or hold this up. I just think if there needs to be a phone number that's added to, to, so that folks are aware of the phone number to call uh, with Republic Services, that that be done. Uh, I think it's important so that it could just reflect that, uh, we're making efforts to assure that the community has a point of contact for any questions or concerns they may have regarding implementation of the new services.
So when you make a motion, uh, with that interlineation addition, then you can vote with that addition.
Okay.
That sounds, sounds good. Thank you. Councilmember Montero?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, uh, I just want the, the public to understand that this, um, this amendment or this agreement is, it was caused by the state of California that mandate the always, uh, you know, food recycle, right? Uh, Mr. Lung, and also talk to about the money that you apply at the Cal Recycle for outreach. Alan?
Uh, yes, um, well, the amendment is basically caused by the S B thirteen eighty-three. Uh, also as part of the amendment, we also included the C P I increase uh, to the contract every year. Um, and yes, we, the city has applied to several grants uh, to help us compensate the extra cost that is being brought up by this S B thirteen eighty-three to implement the program. So we, we have applied for, uh, grant funding for this.
Yeah, so, so we will have a very strong outreach communication, uh, to the business and to the resident because there, it, it's.
Because uh it's 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 a complicated process, but 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 we on top of it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I second the motion by Miss Valentine.
And I'd just like to make the amendment to include that by indemni- indemniation, um, a resource phone number for uh allied services, so that. Community could be um aware of a direct phone number to contact in case there's any questions or concerns.
Okay, Councilwoman Valentine, can you repeat the motion including the interdelineation, please, since it was your original motion?
Okay, so I um, I move, um, uh, let's see.
Item number eleven?
Eleven.
Okay, um. I move approval of an amendment of the solid waste franchise agreement between the city and Allied Waste Services of North America LLC, D.V.A. Republic Services. And auth- uh, and authorize the city to execute a fourth amended and restated franchise agreement with the interlineation. That um, that an a phone number be included uh for allied waste. Which can be used by uh anyone requiring further information about how to implement this program.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded, okay, thank you, we just need to restate everything, um. Okay, uh, thank you, though, Councilwoman, uh, English too. Please?
All right, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Ray English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Patterson?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
Vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
We'll go ahead on number twelve, discussion for a little bit.
So I just wanna um, kinda clarify, I guess, what we're voting on and 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 have the City Attorney uh confirm. So I'm understanding where where this is uh, to approve this disposition development loan agreement. Between Hawthorne and Encore Apartments Limited Partnership, which was essentially um. Consistent with that Skid Row agreement with Skid Row, development agreement with Skid Row, and so we're. Uh, we're asking to approve is a pre-construction loan of a half million dollars, uh construction loan of a million dollars. As well as uh lending them the money to um buy the land from the successor agent at fair market value.
That that is correct, um, the, this whole program is started in, I believe, twenty twenty. Uh, starting with the RFP, all these conditions regarding the loans and whatnot, was part of the RFP and with the uh the exclusive negotiation agreement. And the um Skid Row Trust is part of the affiliation affiliated with Encore, Encore. Um, who are developers, the DDLA is, does not mean it's completed, it it's the the closing of the escrow. Will not occur till April twenty twenty-four, because there are other uh funding requirements that is required as as a condition to closing. So uh the the loan is coming from, the five hundred thousand was before the council um which approved. Uh, the five hundred thousand is pre-construction loan. Uh, and that would come from the excess surplus funds of the, out of the, the low mod fund that of the successor agency. Um, and that excess surplus is, um, the last report we had was that it was in the amount. Of somewhere near six hundred ninety thousand, I I'm not sure exact amount, but it was over six hundred thousand, and that extra surplus. Has to be used for development of low income, uh particularly thirty percent of that being extremely low income. Um, or that fund goes to another city successor agency or to the state H.C.D. So, and then where where the excess surplus comes from is the, the low mod fund, twenty percent set aside fund. That the city currently has um, about six point nine million, I believe. And if we don't use that for development of new low-income housing, then percentage of that accumulates into the excess surplus. So, because we, the city didn't um begin and encumber. The low mod fund to low-income um development, we have that excess surplus, which is being used partially here. Um, with the uh, with the, with the Veterans Housing Project.
And the million dollars is also coming from the set aside fund?
Yes, the million dollar is coming from the successor agency low mod fund of the six point nine million that that's uh that's accumulated so far.
And then my understanding is, is it's the uh, uh, who owns that property, is it City Hawthorne or is it successor agency?
It's the successor agency that owns that property, not us.
Eventually, the concept is doing a seller financing agreement for that land, uh that probably, you know, will be transferred over to them, and there'll be a loan agreement for the fair market value.
Yes, and even the loan agreement requires them to pay um out of the rent proceeds about fifty percent to be paid, applied to the loan agreement. So, it's successor agency, but, you know, there will be some payments made over long-term from the rents.
Got it.
All right, I make a motion?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
I, got it.
Councilmember Member Ray English?
Uh, I'm first gonna, for the record, I'm just gonna note that I'm not comfortable with regards to no secure um. Uh collateral with regards to uh, you know, providing a loan with no secure collateral, and that uh, that scares me. Um, however, I'm gonna vote for it, but I'm not an enthusiastic about uh no securities um that the City of Hawthorne is is looking to to make. To assure that this uh project doesn't um, you know, isn't mad. I.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Patterson?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
For item number, for item number nine, there are no bids, and for item number thirteen, there's no public hearings, and for item number fourteen, there are no ordinances at this time. Next, we have General Matters, Mister Clerk, please read item sixteen for the record, and Finance Director uh Lopez will proceed with the presentation, go ahead.
Okay, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA update, recommended motion, staff recommends city council review and discussion of the outline of programs. For assisting the Hawthorne business with ARPA funds, after receiving city council direction, city staff will refine the details. Of the programs and develop implementation and marketing strategies.
Wow.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, um, thank you for the opportunity to bring you this update. Um, during our last update for uh American Rescue Plan Funds, um council um requested a couple of items, and this is what we're bringing back to you tonight. Um, one of those was to um. Directly send out a second business needs survey uh to solicit greater response from the business community. And the second was to provide uh program details for business assistance, and we have. Um, Mister Barry Foster and Mister Ken Duran on tonight to bring us the details on those items.
I'm gonna have uh Ken Duran from our staff, he's the senior advisor, go through the um, the report or the presentation, and then I'll be happy answering questions too.
Good evening, uh Mayor and City Council, uh so, uh as uh Miss Lopez has indicated. We're bringing back to you tonight uh some more details about the five programs that the council had discussed as far as business assistance programs. For the uh use of the ARPA funding, so uh of those programs, um, if uh we have the uh PowerPoint presentation available. So there are five programs that we are presenting back to you tonight with a little bit more uh detail. So the first one is the Business Assistant Grant Program, the total allocation that the council had previously discussed was fifty thousand dollars. And this program would provide grants of up to five thousand dollars to individual businesses to assist them in a variety of areas. Uh, for their businesses, uh some of the examples could be for employee training, for uh rehiring of employees. For COVID nineteen grant and loan application processing, um and financial training uh for their individual businesses. This program would be uh administered by a third-party partner, uh as suggested by the city council at your last meeting. Uh, HDL and staff has reached out to the El Camino Small Business Development Center and South Bay Workforce uh Investment Board. And we feel that they could be good partners in administering these programs, and so once we get into the more details of these programs. We can work with them to possibly assist us with uh administering these programs. The businesses that would be eligible would be businesses that are located within the Incorporated um City of Hawthorne. Businesses that have uh, uh demonstrated that they have actually lost um uh employees or loss of business revenue. Uh, since the pandemic occurred, and that they would be small businesses, not necessarily corporate businesses um within the city. The funding availability is limited, so that the award of funds is contingent upon the availability of funds available for this particular program. The second grant program, if we can go to the next slide, is for business rental assistant grants. And the total allocation that the city council authorized is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in total. And this would be for grants up to fifteen thousand dollars per business to assist them with um payment of back rent. Um, that they may have outstanding, this business um assistant program would be targeted for uh brick-and-mortar businesses. Uh, for small businesses located within the city, and again, not necessarily um targeted to for uh national tenants, but for for um. Uh, small businesses, uh and again, it would be businesses that could demonstrate that they actually are in arrears in their rent uh since the beginning of the pandemic. And that the payment of the rental assistance would go directly to the landlords and not necessarily to the businesses. And that the uh businesses would set up a program with the landlords for um payment of any further outstanding. Uh, uh rent arrears that may be occurred, again, businesses um uh that are eligible for this program. Uh, would be uh ones that we would be targeting through a program that potentially could be administered by a third-party. HDL um has administered this type of program for other clients and other cities. And so we have proposed a lot to the city that we could actually do a turnkey operation of administering this program on behalf of the city. The next business program uh would be marketing assistance, and in total, there's a hundred thousand dollars that was allocated for this program. And it's actually two separate programs, one is for seventy-five thousand dollars for individualized marketing assistance. And this would be for um individual businesses who would apply for assistance to assist them with um their individual and marketing programs. And examples that were talked about at the last meeting were for businesses. Um, to um maximize and utilize the use of email accounts, upgrade their existing um email or websites. Or actually to create websites that don't exist, the program would be designed to allow for up to two thousand dollars per business. Uh, for individualized assistance, for them to utilize these types of services, again, there would be a third-party that would be administer, um administering these programs. The second program, uh if you can go to the next slide, is more of a citywide business assistance program and marketing program. This would be a um program that would be a citywide shop local marketing program, uh allocating twenty-five thousand dollars in total. It would be a program that we have um designed for a number of our other cities, that would be an e-gift card program. That would allow for residents to purchase uh e-gift cards in the amount um that we would determine, for example, twenty-five dollars. And then the ARPA funds would actually um allow the city to match that amount, so if a purch- uh a resident purchased a twenty-five dollar gift card. The city would match that to uh with another twenty-five dollars, so that they would actually have a gift card of fifty dollars. And then there would be local businesses that would register to be recipients of these gift cards. And then the residents could actually redeem those gift cards at those um businesses that are part of the program. So it's actually a a a a program that allows the residents to um actually um gain additional value for a gift card. And actually allow them to purchase the, or redeem those at businesses within the community, so it's kind of a win-win, so the residents get some value. And the businesses get um additional business by having those gift cards redeemed at their local businesses. Um, the last program is the storefront reopening and and board-up removal program. The council previously authorized a hundred thousand dollars for this program, and this would be grants that would be available to. Uh, businesses or property owners to allow them to um. Make improvements to their storefronts, whether it be for removal of boarding, uh restoration of glass or previous storefront materials, graffiti abatement. Signage repairs or other cosmetic improvements to their storefronts to make them more presentable. So the maximum amount of this grant would be three thousand dollars per business, and the business um category that we're of targeting would be. On Hawthorne Boulevard, uh the business corridor, and so we would be actually uh marketing and targeting that business corridor. As the recipients of this funding of gr- of of grants. So, these are the general outline of the grant programs that we've um identified. Uh, once we get the approval from the city council, we will identify uh more specifics of the programs. Um, I know there are questions as far as if there are um businesses that have um needs for multiple categories, would they be eligible? Uh, we think they can be, um but again, it may all be dependent upon the demand of the recipients. Or or the demand of the applicants, um, and these are all pilot programs too, we wanna emphasize that. That these programs can be tailored um down the road if there are issues that arise during the application and the implementation process. But uh, this would uh, you know, set forward the process to actually start forward with these programs. The other thing that uh was mentioned at the last council meeting was a secondary survey program. And so we'd included in the staff report a secondary survey of the businesses that's more tailored towards these specific programs. And we would be sending out these surveys to solicit information from the various businesses as to the specifics of what they would be interested in. Um, applying for in these various uh business categories, and so this will allow us to tailor that uh, that uh marketing approach, if you will. Uh, for these different businesses, um, wanna make sure that it's clear that we will market these programs to all the businesses in the community. Not just those that's uh participated in the first survey or the second survey. So, uh, that's kind of an outline of the five programs that we've um um presented the guidelines for and the secondary survey. So what uh staff and uh our consult, your consultant is looking for is any feedback that you might have. And uh with that, uh we will open it up for any questions and uh feedback from the city council.
All right, which one's of my colleague was first, who wants to go first, I got three people.
Can you have Mister Foster go first, please?
Do you have something to add to that, Mister Foster?
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things before the council gets into discussion, um, some of the things that that Mister Durant talked about, um. So the first survey we did, we we actually had a an eleven percent response rate, which is really representative sampling for a survey of this type, but. Um, but we also support the idea of going back out with um a more tailored survey to kind of build upon what we had done the first time and look at these actual programs and. And talk about specific interests, and so I think that um Councilmember um Ray English was the one that brought this up, and I think it was a great idea, so we're. We're not doing the same survey, but it's a more tailored survey and see if we can get uh another response, just to build upon what we did the first time. Um, even though that was a representative sampling, and then uh some of the programs that that Mister Durant talked about, I just wanna hit on a couple of things, so. So looking at doing, you know, finding some of those partners that can help with some of the resources like El Camino and other folks. Um, that that, and we're not reinventing the wheel, you you're looking at proven partners that are doing those kinds of things, I think that's important to help with. With some of their business resource needs, um and then um looking at another thing that we're we're finding. Um, is really a prevalent issue in in a lot of the clients that we have across the state, is even though um sales are up for businesses. Cities um, sales tax is actually back to pre-pandemic levels and it's increased, but i- it's really important to note that the businesses, the margins and the profits. That those small businesses are making are not back to pre-pandemic, um they've had to increase cost. And so the, so the city reaps the benefits of having that sales tax increase, but those businesses are still struggling. And so their 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 margins are not back to pre-pand- pre-pandemic, and one of the big things that we're finding out. In the surveys that we've done, and we also noticed it in Hawthorne, is a lot of businesses, small businesses especially, are still behind in their rent, and so. That's the reason that we've kind of suggested this program, we actually kicked this off um up in San Leandro in the Bay Area. Kind of similar demographics, um, it's a, it's a larger city right next to Oakland, um up in the Bay Area, and so we. We tailored a program for them, we monitored and administered everything online with pre-applications, applications, scoring. They did, they did fifty um grants up there, at fifty. They did fifty grants up there, fifteen thousand a grant, and it was hugely successful. And so they're at the point now where they're actually getting money. The money goes directly to the landlords, doesn't go to the businesses, so the landlord needed consent to that. But it really, it helps get them kind of more current towards their rent. And they also have to do some training to show how they're going to get back to totally concurrent with their rent. And so that's one of the big problems, especially with small businesses, so that's why we're going to find that here too. And so we have the ability to go ahead and kind of do that turnkey process. We have a call center out of our Fresno office that works with a lot of cities and business licenses. And so they're really used to dealing with people. We also have the ability to do up there, and it was a big need was to do Chinese. So we had Chinese translation, Spanish-speaking translation. So our folks are very skilled in doing that. All the applications are translated too. And it's, so, but if people have a struggle in terms of filling out the applications, we have somebody that they can call and walk them through. We'll even take, if somebody has a tax form and they're having trouble loading it into their computer, they can take a picture on their phone and send it to us, and they can go ahead and take that. So it really is, it kind of even surprised me how effective it's been. So we think that's something that can really fit nicely with Hawthorne. And again, I think it's just kind of talking about using these established kind of programs and partners and everything else that we think really makes a lot of sense. And so the survey is geared towards taking one step further from that original survey, kind of tailoring it in, getting some more feedback. But I think the programs as a total really will help your small businesses, especially towards recovery, and that's really important though.
Okay, colleagues, who's going to go first?
I was first.
Yeah, and who will be next, just to establish it? You go.
It's English.
All right.
Councilwoman English.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Valentine.
Okay, so, all right, so my first question is, you said that you had an eleven percent response from the first survey. What about the second survey? Have you sent that out already?
No, we included that in the packet tonight. If you guys are, if the council is comfortable with that survey, we're ready to send that out. The staff will actually send it out. But if, we began trying to tailor and get more information, but still have it be somewhat easier for somebody to fill out. And we don't want to have the survey be have so many questions that it gets cumbersome and they don't want to do it. We want to kind of tailor it. So if the council is comfortable with the survey as presented tonight, I'm ready to go with that.
So when you say send out, how is it going to be sent out? What is the rollout going to look like?
Since the first one, we're actually, we've got it so that we can do, the city has purchased Survey Monkey. So it'll be a little bit easier than the first one, so it will go out electronically. And folks can either use a QSR code or whatever else. And so to help formulate this out, so it's done via email, QSR, you know, a variety of different ways it can go out.
Well, I think it should also go on a website.
Yes, absolutely.
But I also think that we need to, we need to find a way to physically give these, this information to the public because, can we do it through a mailer? Because a lot of our businesses don't have email, they don't have email, and they don't really look at the website. I mean, I have, I have visited many businesses, and I know that they don't, a lot of them are not participating in the twenty-first century electronics. So I just, I just think we just have to figure out a better way to reach them.
Yeah, if it's, and that's a good point, and we've done this in a few other places, if the council wants to go that route, you can, you can do a hard copy mail out, but I think you want to have a QSR code so that it can be done electronically, so they can scan that and go in there. You'd be surprised, people have the ability to do things on their phone and whatever else with smartphones and everything else today. The first go around, we had a lot of them done by hand, and all that information has to then be entered in, and it's just very time consuming. So I think Survey Monkey is an easy way to do that. We've done it in a lot of different places where you can just use a QSR code where they can get in. And that's really the reason why it's designed with just a few questions, so it's really easy to do.
I agree with you, I just think we need to do a hard mailer.
You can do a hard mailer with a QSR code too, where they can.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Yeah, that's, that's the perfect marriage right there.
And then my, and my, and my other question is, who's going to monitor this program and be responsible for feedback to businesses when they have questions? How is that going to work?
Are you talking about the individual grant programs?
So, so you send out the information, they, they, they don't send it back? Or they call, they want to call and ask questions about it? Who do they call?
Well, each of the, each of the different grant programs would have a different administration process for it. So there would be definitely, whether it's going to be your city staff or a third party, that would be the ones that would be answering the questions. So the survey is really just kind of gauging the input from the businesses. But once we start the application process, there will be a very detailed process as far as how people will apply for these grants and who they would actually be contacting, whether it's through your city staff or whether it's through a third party. So it would be very clear to the businesses of how they would actually apply for and get questions answered for each of the grant programs.
Okay, so, so it would be someone on our city staff, is that what you're saying?
That, or we would be, or your city staff would be contracting with the third party, whether it's the El Camino Small Business Development Center or South Bay Workforce Development or HDL or another third party that would be actually administering the programs. But it would be very clear to the businesses of who they would be contacting.
And how soon can this all be put together and done so that the businesses can start? So that we, I, I, I want to see the money get out to them as soon as possible. So how soon is this, how long a process is this going to be?
Let me try to answer that. So I think as soon as we, if you concur tonight that the survey is appropriate, we can work with staff to get that out as quickly as possible. And I think, I think we want to keep that survey open for at least three weeks and so we can get a really good response. And then once we've been able to fine tune that, then we can get more specific in terms of details of each one of the programs.
Okay, and then my last question is, can you, this is really not a survey per se, but can any money, can, is there any possibility that we can use some of that money for? Or can, or is this the appropriate time to discuss expanding out the outdoor dining areas? I had, I have gone to different cities and I have seen some really beautiful expansion of outdoor dining. You can go to El Segundo and see, you can all go to Manhattan Beach where the city actually expanded the outdoor dining onto the streets and landscaped it, made it beautiful, and it's very inviting, and people just flock to it. And I'm just wondering, is this the time to discuss that or is this, or is that something we would discuss separately?
It's, it's not part of what we're talking about tonight, but it's certainly something that we can talk about in the future and look at doing it. You still have plenty of funds available for ARPA. This was meant to kind of get the first thing out there with these five programs. We've worked with a number of cities that have allocated money for outdoor dining, it's an eligible expense. And so it's appropriate, and that was one of the questions that we originally had in the, in the first survey was would people have a use for doing that, continuing outdoor dining, having ARPA funds help with assistance of improvements? And it's more appropriate, I don't think you're ever going to see too many restaurants get built anymore without the opportunity to have patios and outdoor dining. Those that had them during the pandemic have flourished and been able to continue to do a lot of business there. I think this, I think COVID is going to be around for a long time. All these things are going to keep coming. So I think a lot of people feel really comfortable about using outdoor dining, so it's really kind of, it's a new norm. And so it's certainly something that we can work with your staff and come back with something in terms of an outdoor dining program and using ARPA funds for it.
Yes, I would like to see that, and I'm very glad to know that we can use ARPA funds for it. And with that, I'll make a motion that we approve your, your survey.
I'll second that, but we still have discussion. Go ahead, Councilmember English, and then Councilmember Montero.
Thank you, Mr. Durant, and thank you, Mr. Foster. I just wanted to talk a little bit about, you know, the tailored survey. There was things that were added that maybe we missed the first time. That's, that's important. The eleven percent response, somewhat okay, but we, I think we could get more. I like the whole idea of giving a call center to where you could just call and get immediate assistance immediately. Is the corridor, Hawthorne Boulevard corridor where this is going to be mainly used, would that include from Imperial to Rosecrans on Hawthorne Boulevard, include the whole Hawthorne Boulevard?
You know, I think that would be, you know, we would work with your staff to identify what the actual parameters of those are. So I would defer to your staff as far as what they want us to focus on. But whatever the parameters are, we can target that particular area.
Okay, I'd like to see Vaughn that identified mainly among the Hawthorne corridor from Imperial to Rosecrans on both sides of the street. There's still a lot of boarded up buildings. I'm just curious if the boarded up buildings are, you know, due to the fact that businesses left, they moved, they couldn't survive, right? And so how are we going to help those owners? Are they the ones that are going to be applying for funding to ultimately assist in bringing, you know, glass back to those buildings that now have, you know, plywood on them? And then micro businesses, we did touch a little bit on micro businesses for, for, you know, obviously COVID, COVID even drove additional businesses to be implemented, right? And so there's those small micro businesses. But I like just the whole idea that we're pushing hard with regards to getting, getting the money out to the businesses. But Vaughn, I also want to see a dedicated staff, we need, we need to be able to identify staff. If they're going to take these calls and they're going to be routed to them, we need to, you know, do that if that's what we're going to do. We just have to be sure of what we're, you know, what we're doing and most importantly, what we're, what we're asking for those businesses to reach us and, you know, getting assistance. I, I still feel that there's a lot of businesses that, you know, are having challenges, communication challenges with regards to, you know, English, Spanish. So all of this is, is, is some of my concerns. And do we have a deadline? Is there, we're going to get this out today, I get that. But is there a deadline for these monies to continuously be available to these businesses?
The deadline is that the, these, the funds need to be allocated by the end of 2024 and expended by the end of 2026. But I think in talking to your staff, we want to get this program rolling out, you know, in the spring of this year and at least get these programs started. And then, as we said, these are pilot programs. And so that they're, you know, we'll kind of be able to gauge how many applications we receive and to see if there's, the demand is greater than the funds available and come back to you and maybe request additional allocation. So I think the timing is that we want to get this program started in the spring of this year and then see what the demand is and see how, you know, how things can go from there.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much, appreciate the reporting out and the information you've given us thus far. Thank you.
Councilmember Montero?
Thank you, Mr. May. Thank you, Mr. Durant and Mr. Foster. Are you guys going to send this survey also in Spanish or is it just going to be in English?
I think, I think, well, I think we can do it in Spanish too. If, we'll have to go ahead and have that translated, but yeah, I think that's an easy thing to do.
Yeah, I think we should because we have a lot of Latinos in Hawthorne that some of them, you know, they struggle with the English language.
Yeah.
Right? Yeah, and I do agree with all your, you know, your five programs that we should move on as quick as possible. I have a recommendation for the storefront reopen and border up removal. We, we discussed the issue on the ad hoc committee, we have an economic development ad hoc committee. And one of the challenge that some of those business owners do not want to remove the border up. They don't want to replace the plywood with glass because they said people keep going back and damaged the glass or broke the glass. So I was trying, I come up with an idea and it was approved by the ad hoc committee for us to maybe find an artist can create some mirrors, mirrors on those plywood. Because we have a great lady that did some mirrors at our parks. And maybe we could, you know, contract her and work with the business owner to create mirrors into those plywood instead of glass because they don't want to replace those glass. Because they said, you know, people keep breaking them, so that's why they don't want to take those boarded up plywood out of the business. So if we can come up with a temporary mirrors that, for those plywood on those business that is continued to be closed, especially on Hawthorne Boulevard, like, you know, the Ninety-Nine Tenth, former of the Ninety-Nine Tenth store. I think that maybe could be an idea that we can do instead of glass because they don't want to replace the glass.
I think that's something we can work with your staff to see if that's acceptable. And so we can look at that as an alternative, if that's something that your staff wants to, you know, consider.
Yeah, and I wanted to make sure that my council colleagues will agree because I understand the issue. Because, you know, if they go and remove the plywood and put glass and then people go and break them again, and it has to repeat over and over again. So if we could come up with a solid program that is a mirror, you know, like art, design some type of mirror. Because I think they have done this in Azusa or some other city up the northeast of LA County that has been very successful, create mirrors into those facade instead of the glass that it doesn't look that bad. But I do agree with Ms. Valentine that we need to, we need to send this survey ASAP and, and English and Spanish and the monkey survey that works and also, you know, use all our medias and even mail them out too. And, and maybe even we can come up with, like you said, a call center to help them, you know, fill out the survey or even give them the tools necessary to download that survey into your system.
Okay, so the feedback's taken. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Ray English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes, but was there a second?
Yes, I seconded it, I seconded it.
Okay.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
Mayor and City Council, Luis.
Mr. Cliff?
Yes. Council discussion and QA regarding charter. Recommend motion to council. One, receive and review the report and supporting information. Two, direct staff to notice and schedule a meeting, a special meeting of the city council of the City of Hawthorne at which time a study session will be held for council discussion and direction on the content to be included in a draft charter. And three, direct staff to prepare and assemble for said meeting examples of charter language regarding the particular topics as may be identified in tonight's discussion for potential inclusion in the draft charter.
Is there a motion? Uh, move?
Can we discuss?
Yeah, we invited discussion, right?
So I mean, I would, then I would like to say something. Yeah, well, there's a motion, nobody said anything.
Okay, he made, he made a motion, I'll go ahead and second.
Okay, discussion, go ahead, you can still discuss.
So looking at some of the sample charters that was included in our packet, it looks pretty simple, right? Really my, like those charters are very simple, some like this is very easy to put together. Cover a couple of areas that's important to us. I know prosecution is important, menus is important, a couple of other things. Looks like what Guanajuatl and some of these other cities did was just a very simple charter. I'm surprised that it costs us twenty-five thousand dollars to put that together, right? It's like four or five pages. But, you know, it seems like it's relatively hmm, simple, right, where we can still adhere to the law rules except for a couple of specific areas in which our charters want to cover. So, I mean, I, I think we should go ahead and put together, what was the recommendation? You know, a study session or was it? Special meeting and study session. And we can, I guess, email some specific asks to the city attorney between now and the end have included in our own sample charter. And then we can kind of discuss all those specifics at that time.
Councilmember Montero, and then Councilwoman Valentine.
Thank you, Mr. May. Actually, I want to ask.
Uh actually, I wanna ask a question to the to our city attorney before we proceed. Uh maybe we should take like a preliminary vote if there is a cons- a majority that is willing to move this thing forward in order to put it on the ballot in twenty twenty two before we do study session or come up with a plan. What do you think, Mr. Kim?
Uh that'll be fine, um I it it's I I guess it would be within the parameters of the topic here. So um I I think that's not a bad idea.
Yeah, before we spend money on consultants and this and that.
Yes, I was gonna say that uh, you know, addressing what Councilman Patterson just stated is that even a simple charter, you have to go through two public hearings and things of nature in which the consultants are involved. So that's why there's a cost involved with that. So um if the simple question is whether we're interested in it at all in moving charter or just keeping it the way it is as a general law city, I I I don't think it's a bad idea. And we have David Snow here as a consultant. Uh Mr. Snow, is this, is it okay to do that at this point?
Um yes, I think it would be fine for this evening for the council to to weigh that. Um I would just note that 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 um if the vote is to proceed, there still will be further votes required in order to actually put it on the ballot. That's the process, it's spelled out in the statute. And there will still be the the uh opportunity for the council and of course, members of the public to weigh in on the exact content of the charter. And that if that changed uh anyone's mind, then there certainly would be room to to adjust course there as well for the council.
So I guess we could take the initial vote at this point to s- uh see how many uh whether there's a quorum to move with charter or just stay as a general law city.
Uh are we ready for comments from anybody?
I have I have comments. I I'm 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 not ready for voting yet, I I wanted to make the make some comments. Um so again, you've already said that there's considerable expenditure of time and effort required to formulate the charter in the first place. Um I'm not sure whether we have fully considered whether the benefit is worth the cost. Um first of all, it's not going to affect SB nine and ten because the statute already says that that matter is of statewide concern. So I'm not sure why we're doing this and whether what what the need is to do it at this time. But and also, there there are other things we haven't considered. I wanna know what is going to be the overall effect of um on uh labor negotiations um uh if we if we do this. And I was gonna ask the city uh city attorney to provide a legal confid- confidential on the effects of creating a charter city on labor negotiations with the bargaining units. I was gonna ask for that anyway. Is this the appropriate time to do that?
Well, it may not be necessary depending on how council vote at this point. Uh according to uh Councilman Montero. If we, I guess the vote can be whether we just wanna remain as a general law city um and not take any further steps in moving into uh putting on the ballot of a charter. So if that's what we if we just take that vote on, you know, and if if um if there's a majority that wanna just remain as a general law city and not move ahead, take any additional step in moving as a charter city, then that will not be necessary, I don't think.
Thank you.
Councilmember Montero, you still have your hand up, go ahead, sir.
Mister Kim, uh my my question was is to make like a preliminary uh vote to see if we want to continuing with the process for the charter. Uh uh like Mr. uh Mayor Pro Tem said, to do a study session to come up with more ideas or even maybe to answer Ms. Valentine's question about labor negotiations versus uh charter city versus um general law city. So we can go ahead and 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 do the vote and then see if there is a way that if we got a majority to say to proceed to the next step.
Oh, um I I.
So then that would and logically, I guess we should take that vote now.
Yes.
Before we have any further discussion then. Uh so I would, you know, so if someone moves and seconds it, then we could take a vote on that.
Okay, so so I made I made so I made the motion for us to do a preliminary vote to see if we can proceed to the process of going from a general law city to a charter city.
I would second that.
I I I'm no problem with that vote, but I'm just curious how that vote is different than than voting on what's on the agenda. What's difficult?
Because it's it's more.
Yeah, because it will give us a second, it will give us a uh it will give us a clear idea that that is a direction that we wanna take. If 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 we wanna go to explore more things about uh the charter city, then then we are commitment to 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 go with the consultant with Mr. David Snow to get us where we wanna go. Uh so I don't want us to go spend money if there is no majority in the council.
So just for clarification, so the the motion is to um take a vote and and not take any further steps in looking into charter. Not take any further.
Well, no, to take or not to take it, okay?
I think the motion, I mean, could you clarify the motion, is it the motion to move forward with or or the motion is to not move forward with the motion specifically?
Yeah, just need clarification on that. Their motion is to preliminarily to move, continue with the steps towards studying the charter?
Yes, i- in a sense like you put it from the beginning. Uh let's say if are we going to stay as a general law city or we going to continue this process of going to uh.
Towards the other direction. A yes or no statement?
Yeah.
What's the spec- that's be a yes or no statement, so what's the specific motion?
It's a yes or no, yeah, exactly.
Can you make the can you restate your motion um as kind of concise as possible?
Okay, so the motion basically is for us to decide if we wanna proceed with with what is on the agenda. Uh if we wanna continue to proceed like Mr. David Penna said, to go to a study session and come up with a language for a simple charter city that potentially end up in 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 the ballot in November twenty twenty second, like Mr. Snow said, we would have to vote again. But this is just a preliminary to see the feeling of the council. If there is a three vote or a two vote or no vote to proceed.
Okay, so just for clarification, I I we need to make this absolutely clear.
Okay.
You uh although you're referencing it as preliminary vote, um if we a vote to determine whether we're gonna proceed forward with a study session and whatnot um is if the council votes to not go forward and take any further action, then everything would stop. So that would essentially mean that city moving ahead and looking into charter will be off the table. Uh Councilman Montero, you're muted.
I'm sorry that I'm muted because I keep coughing, so I don't want you guys to hear me cough because my sinus is like now. So yes, what you said is just is correct. Uh if if let's say uh there is a t- a a three vote no, so this 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 process is dead, is 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 no more further action. But if there is a three yes to proceed, then you will, you know, go ahead with Mr. Snow and come up with all the logistics, all the public hearings, all the study session, all the laws that Ms. Valentine is crashing about the labor versus wherever, so so we will move on.
Okay, so it was yes, then we'll move on to item number seventeen.
Yeah, we need to vote on.
So that that's part of a study session, right? All those questions?
No, um I think of he's he's just even before we move on to the study session aspect, it's an initial vote. Are we going to proceed with the idea of?
It's a go vote, then we'll then we'll move on to vote on item seventeen. There's a no, there's a no go.
Okay, so so let me let me put it this way. Because look, my head is in the clouds, so but but let me put it this way. Uh I made a motion for us to vote to proceed or not proceed with charter process. That's clear? Okay, Mr. Snow.
So yes vote means that we proceed with the study session and whatnot, no vote means everything dies here today.
Go ahead. Mr. Snow have a.
So so really, the the motion is the motion is to proceed with the study and um potential implementation of a charter. Um and then so a ye- a yes vote means we proceed and no vote means we're done.
Correct.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
Um.
So I already had a second on it, didn't I?
Councilwoman Valentine, you're seconded that motion?
Yes.
All right, roll call vote, please. It's a yes to proceed with charter city, no to stop.
Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Abstain.
All right, the vote reflects uh Councilmember Montero, Councilmember Reyes English and Mayor Pro Tem Patterson voting yes, Val- uh Councilmember Valentine no and Mayor Vargas abstaining.
Okay, so now we could proceed with the what the Mr. Patterson is recommending.
Uh yeah, I was I was just moving to to approve number seventeen. I mean, I made my comments that it seemed like a very simple process. Um I think that um, you know, creating greater control on local levels is of my benefit.
So in our in our discussion, can we decide on when we would want to have this special meeting as a study session?
I mean, we can do it this week.
Oh, oh, I don't think that Mr. Snow is ready.
This twenty second. Um. Mr. Snow, is there a preference date that you prefer for the study session special meeting?
Um I am available on uh March, the evenings of March second and March third. Um if those if either of those would work for the council.
Could also be daytime, but the third works fine for me.
The third at what time?
I would prefer earlier in the day than later in the day.
Can we do four thirty, please? So I'll be available after work and at a computer.
Oh, you're saying March third?
Yes.
At what time?
Four thirty.
How long would that take? Yeah, I'm I'm not going to be available at that time. Unless it's earlier.
I I can do it earlier.
Uh the the mayor is stating that he'd be working, so.
Well, I can I can what's I could be available at four thirty and on.
I could be available, yeah, but yeah, I can't, I can only be unavailable for an hour if we start at four thirty.
What about at six o'clock as uh we do regular council meeting?
Any later time on that day, uh Councilmember Valentine?
Can we do like?
On March third, no, you said March third, that's a Thursday, no, I'm not available after six o'clock.
Available at all on Thursday?
I'm available during the day, but you said you couldn't do it before four thirty.
Four, I could try to make it at four o'clock.
Four o'clock would work if I can if I can leave at five thirty.
Are you guys okay with that?
That is fine for me, so I give Councilwoman Valentine an hour and a half. Hopefully that would be enough.
Right, four o'clock, guys.
On March third?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Then I will also, I was given a directive to do a legal confidential about uh the effect of um labor negotiation if the city was to go charter.
Yeah.
Okay, guys, let's move on to the next items.
Can I just make a can I just make a comment real quick?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Um I've been reading uh some of the examples of some of the cities that have charter and um they're speaking specifically to uh one, for instance, the city of Wynn Park with regards to um uh neighbor uh labor negotiations. So I just want colleagues to be able to look at the the information that's in our packet, just an FYI, okay?
Okay.
Can we get a vote on the uh the motion here?
I move to um move forward seventeen and set the um the meeting for the time and date we just said.
I'm sorry, what is I'm what is the state, the motion again, to what, to move on this?
I'm moving to approve item seventeen and set the study session for the time and date that we just discussed.
So you're do you're combining those motions?
That item seventeen is asking for us to direct staff.
To set a date.
Meeting, so I'm just doing what item seventeen is is saying.
So item seventeen has received the report that submitted for this agenda item and to schedule a special meeting which has been agreed to be March third at four o'clock uh for the study session and direct staff to prepare and assemble for uh the contents to be included in the charter uh or examples of charter language regarding the particular topics that may be interested. So um if the council members have uh interested topics that they wanna discuss now, it can be discussed before a vote. Uh or as Councilman Patterson has suggested, you could email um your particular provisions of the charter that you would prefer to me and I could, we could.
But that's the that's the whole point of the meeting on the on the special meeting to just decide.
Uh well, we, I think Mr. Snow needs some input so that he can come up with sample charters to be discussed at the special uh study session.
Yeah, so in our package today, we were getting in other cities charters and so it's up to us to say, okay, we wanna include this, this, that. So we can say that now or we can email the city attorney and say include A, B, and C in our own sample. And then we can discuss that sample at that next meeting.
Let's just go ahead and do that.
I second the motion.
Let's go ahead and provide the uh information to him as we as we as we see fit. And then uh but it doesn't have to be done now, we need to move on to some other items.
Okay, so we need a vote on item seventeen, please.
Roll call vote.
Okay, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Um abstain.
Okay, the vote reflects uh council members voting yes and Mayor abstaining.
Which means the extension is to move that I exceed to the uh but that's all of us. All right, let's move on to next item, please. Uh ba ba ba. City manager consent calendar, go ahead.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, elected officials. I have item twenty, excuse me, item nineteen, order of contract for Holly Glen and Jem Thor Park Improvement Project, project number two two zero three. Item twenty, we have a word of contract for sewer improvement project twenty twenty two, project number twenty one dash zero seven. And lastly, we have item twenty one, general maintenance three year contract, city project number two two dash zero five, out to bid. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager consent calendar, may I have a motion to approve items nineteen, excuse me, nineteen through twenty one?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Aye.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and council members voting yes.
Um there are no there are no items on the city attorney's consent calendar, but I would like to move up an item related to the city attorney, which is item number twenty eight, Mr. City Attorney. Which is item number twenty-eight, Mr. City Attorney, go ahead. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I was metered, sir. Um number twenty-eight is a discussion action, um basically uh the motion. The motion, the city council will be asked to select um one of the three options. But basically, it's a response to a letter. The letter was dated January twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two from the attorney for M and A Cabaye. The owners of Hawthorne Mall, that's Mr. Paul Rohr of Loben Lob. Alleging the city council had violated the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code, Section five-four-nine-five-zero at sec. At a city council meeting held on April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one. The recommended motion is staff recommends that the city council responds to the letter. Within the thirty-day time period required under the Government Code, Section five-four-nine-six-zero point two subsection C-one. At the city council meeting on February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, by approving one of the following alternative response letter. Number one, send a response letter A, in which the city council acknowledges the allegations in the letter. And commits to assist and desist from the alleged illegal action. This would prevent uh any further type of lawsuit brought by the attorneys for the M and A Cabaye. Number, option number two, send a response letter B, in which city council corrects the misrepresentations. Of the record made by the letter, that's uh the letter from the attorneys for the Cabbays. And the city council does not agree to cease and des- cease and desist from the alleged violations of the Brown Act made because the record shows. That those allegations are unfounded. Option, the letter B, this option would allow the attorneys for the M and A Cabaye to bring a lawsuit against the city. Option three is to send response to letter C, in which the city council corrects the misrepresentations of the record made by the letter. And the city council and the city council commits to ce- cease and desist from the alleged illegal action. Option three, letter C, would also preclude a further lawsuit from the M and A Cabaye attorneys.
Mr. City Attorney, which is your recommendation?
Um I I cannot make a recommendation on this. This is a decision that the council has to decide by uh in an open session. Um the letter has to be responded to within thirty days, so it would have to be mailed out by February twenty-fifth. Um the the, having said that, only one of these options. The letter, the second one, letter B, opens the door for a lawsuit to be brought by M and A Cabaye. In an offensive move against the city, whereas the first and the third option precludes any litigation regarding. What may have took place in the closed session and things of that nature. Um and it. It would minimize the lawsuit against the city if we if we went to one or three. Number two would be to open the door for a lawsuit brought by the attorneys for M and A Cabaye. Letter three mi- states, the the letter would state the city council um would correct the misrepresentation. Made in their letter in the accusation of violation of Brown Act. However, that it, that city council would would commit to assist and desist. From any type of similar action, and that would preclude um the the any potential for a lawsuit. So um letters, the third option is a um it corrects the misrepresentation. But at same time precludes a lawsuit.
Um uh who wants to go first of the three council members?
I was first.
Okay, Councilwoman Valentine, go ahead.
So I'm going to be in favor of number three because the in that one, we would correct the misrepresentations of the record. And we would commit to cease and desist, and it would preclude a further lawsuit, is that correct?
That is correct.
I would, I'm I'm um going to vote for number three.
Mayor Pro Tem?
I agree with uh Councilmember Valentine. I think that number three makes the most sense for us.
Councilmember English?
Um City Attorney, now this is, you know, uh asking for more information, you know, they they gave a specific meeting. And I'm curious as to what they're alleging, and the only way to be able to. To review that, uh to to see what they're even discussing, let alone, you know. Making accusations on is for us to review that, wouldn't it? Wouldn't it be in our best interest to review what it is that they're saying we did or did not do?
So the letter has to be sent out, the the letter um s- the staff report and the letters specifically. Provides what their accusation is. The accusation is, is that on the April thirteenth meeting. In which a.
Twenty-seventh, what thirteen?
Yes, I understand, but it it relates to April thirteenth meeting where um the former city attorney was terminated. And Mr. Ewing was brought in. On the twenty-seventh meeting, uh the Mayor Vargas had made a statement. That there was some uh misconduct involved with the April thirteenth meeting in which the termination of. Mr. Mayor Hill was was voted on. And then there was a agenda item about interim city attorney. And whether there should be a a law office or or individual city attorney and whatnot. And that they went into closed session. Now, what the accusation is, is that that. Any discussion of malfeasance or improper conduct in voting to terminate. The former city attorney on the April thirteenth meeting should not have been done in a closed session in April twenty-seventh meeting. Without knowing what actually was discussed, because that closed session resulted in appoint of myself as an interim city attorney. Which I wasn't aware that was gonna take place. So essentially, option three says. We're correcting your uh accusations here, this is what took place, but. In order to preclude any litigation, we're gonna assist and desist from any uh alleged illegal conduct. That's what option three says. Option two, which opens the door for litigation, is we deny what you're accusing. Uh we're not gonna do any assist and desist and go ahead and bring a lawsuit.
Councilmember Montero?
Yeah, I agree uh with option number three. Because, you know, we don't want no lawsuit, and besides, we didn't do nothing wrong. So just go ahead with number three.
I make a motion for number three?
Second.
Roll a vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and council members voting yes.
Thank you, thank you, Council. Uh what do you vote for? Twenty-six is gone. Uh budget line, you have two items, is that what it is?
Yeah, who I, yes, I do.
Well, Mayor, no, you already got one done, uh Councilwoman. But uh go ahead with item twenty-four, budget line item, accounts transfers by department head, uh Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, both my items really a result of the uh. The uh the audit that was done on the city attorney's office. Uh from my recollection, the way I understood. What the auditor had said is some of the things that weren't best practices in the city attorney's office. Weren't just isolated to the city attorney's office, and so I wanted to make sure that we uh address those throughout the city. So specifically, I I think it it came up that um. There was a practice of doing some last-minute transfers between accounts in order to keep the budgets balanced. Um or keep within the allocated budget. And that uh best practices is to do it uh to kind of come to the council before. Uh like with our mid mid uh mid-year budget review, um I would imagine to kind of discuss that and get that authorization. So I just wanna um make that a policy that that uh the best practice is conducted throughout the city, not just the city attorney's office.
Um I'm going to add to that, uh Mayor Pro Tem. Um I have seen a co- kind of some of these movements between accounts happen in the past. And uh I just don't want to be surprised by uh these movements between accounts at the end. So as long as whatever process we choose is efficient, where they notify us, get our approval. I mean, I'm pretty sure if it's for a worthy reason, we'll uh go ahead and prove these things. Um but I just don't think that uh it can be done sporadically. But I also don't want to stutter their progress either, so they have to be able to uh. Uh put everything together and be as efficient as possible, so I think that's a good idea. Okay, do a do, is that a directive, sir?
It is a directive.
Okay, I concur. I don't think anybody's in opposition. Go ahead and with item number twenty-five?
Yeah, number twenty-five is also. You know, one thing that I've I've found myself, when, you know, every council meeting, we get the warrants, right? That that we approve, right, since we approve pay bills every every two weeks. And we approve, you know, I don't know, I'll make up another couple hundred checks, right, to be paid out. And our warrants, i- i- it has the vendor, the check number, and the account that is being charged and account description. I found these council descriptions to be very vague. Um and so one thing that came up in the auditor's presentation was. A lot of the expenses that were coming out of the city attorney's office weren't able to. We could, we do a better job of kind of identifying what those expenses were for, or what those, who those vendors really. Were, what they really did for the city, but I found that that that's a challenge that um I think occurs throughout the city. You know, we have, I'm looking at uh our warrants right now, and it says contract services for everything. Right, and I'm exaggerating, let's say everything, but you know, Apple One, Arthur J. Gallagher, uh Associated Soil Engineer. Um you know, Burke Williams-Sorson. Yeah, and you know, this tells us nothing, Catholic charities of whatever, right? It's just contract services, doesn't really tell us a lot. So I think uh maybe a good idea to be a little bit more, have some more specific categories. So when we can report about what's being spent on what, we can be very precise. We don't have to like pull. The the backup and start asking people questions, right, the lo- the 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 uh general ledger account. Section should tell it all.
Um thank, thank you for bringing that recommendation. That's another item that uh I think that's been of concern, especially with the warrants. We're talking almost specific, uh particularly about the warrants.
Yes.
Leads a lot to the, you know, a lot of questions that we, like you're right, we have to call up staff and ask them, what does this mean? What does this mean? And some, some of them don't even have a descriptive vendor description, so even at the minimum, we should have a a vendor description. Um and in addition, you're su- su- suggesting what is maybe a one or two uh word description as to what the purchase was or what the service was. Um I think that's valuable, so I I agree with you on that one.
If I can, just really, really quick, Mayor, the the packet as you see is over a hundred pages, so to add. Items is gonna make the packet a lot larger, so just take that in consideration. And then also, I would like to get our finance director's input on this item before a vote is taken.
Uh so we we do have um budgeting um started at this point for the new fiscal year. And we have instructed department heads to try to break out um their purchases. Into um line items that are more descriptive, but we can't get into too much detail. Uh because then you're gonna have uh department reports that are gonna be five to ten pages long. When it, when it was two pages long, and it could be a purchase that was for ten dollars or fifty dollars. Um and you're gonna have a a new budget line item that's only gonna show a ten-dollar purchase. For the larger items, um I believe that that would definitely be beneficial, but not for purchases that are gonna be, you know, so minimal. Um i- and we have asked for departments to also um give more description on what their purchases are. Rather than just saying it's a contract service purchase, we um have instructed them also to. Um if it's a contract for animal services, then it should say contract for animal services. If it's a contract for um, you know, uh alarm services, then then it should say alarm services rather than just contract services. So we're working with the departments to try to give you a little more information with each of these purchases.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not gonna say, I'm not trying to volunteer to specifically identify what you're saying. But, you know, I would definitely like to ask city manager to um kind of get involved and kind of figure it, you know. You understand exactly what I'm asking. Figure out a solution, maybe you report back on on what the specific decision is. Um you know, if you gotta reach back out to the auditor to get some assistance or whatnot, but um yeah, just.
Okay, we have direction, I understand, uh which also I'll work with the finance directors to come up with a solution to bring back the council or bring back to yourself for approval.
But it, and it also sounds like uh police is already kind of, I I mentioned like a one or two-word description as to what the purchase was that's different than contract service. That's all you kind of need. You don't need anything else. You see, those like, you know.
Or it could be like contract service for legal, legal services, contract service. I think that stuff is is really awful.
Not contract services.
We will, we will uh work on changing those descriptions, especially if it's um if they're working with a lot of contract service items.
Miss, thank you, uh Mayor Pro Tem, very good, thank you. Sounds good. Item number twenty-six has been discussed, and item number twenty-seven, that's your last item, uh Mayor, uh Councilwoman Valentine?
Yes, so um the city lost money during the Super Bowl. Because of the restrictions on charging rental fees that are in our code. We need to look into what other cities are doing with respect to their rental fees. There are many events coming up in the future in Inglewood, and I don't want us to lose out. I am directing the city manager to do a study of what other city managers in this, in this, in the South Bay region are charging. For rental of their facilities.
Is that a directive, miss?
Yes, I just said.
Okay, directive, are you good with that, huh? Do you have that written down?
Yes, direction received, uh staff will study um the requests you made, Councilmember Valentine, and will report back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember, councilmembers, uh and elected officials reports and recommendations, we're close to the end. Where is our city treasure? Go ahead.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's uh, uh nice meeting, uh. I just, you know, I feel sometimes maybe uh there's such thing as like doing too much, just seems like so many programs for all kinds of things. Uh but uh, you know, I hope we don't lose focus on the hundred-year celebration, that's all. Uh other than that, uh I hope you all have a great evening. Cheers.
Thank you, Mr. Se- uh City Treasure. Uh our honorable city clerk?
I just have a few things, so first of all, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for for everyone watching from home. Uh so tomorrow we'll be doing the homeless count in Hawthorne. Um we're gonna start at eight P M, um and I think they might still need volunteers. So if you're interested, send me an email and I can connect you with Dusa who's gonna be in charge of it. Um my email's phumenes@cityofhawthorne.org. Um I also want to thank all the volunteers that came out to our produce and face mac mask drive uh about a week and a half ago. Were able to give out produce to about five hundred families, and also uh thanks to Southwest Carpinteries Union and Mayor Vargas that connected us. With them, we provided about five thousand and ninety-five masks to our community. Um and again, I want to thank Public Works for helping us out with the trash bins and for the city for, you know, letting us do this. Um for, yeah, it's just, it's it's a great way to just bring the community together to do something for the community. Um and then as always, in regards to COVID-nineteen, if you're not vaccinated, please get vaccinated, because you can't, uh it's not only about your life, but saving others' lives around you. Um and if you're eligible, please get your booster. Uh you can go to vaccinateLAcounty.com, uh and get more information. On boosters, um so yes, please get vaccinated, and that's all on my end. Thank you.
We'll go with uh Councilmember Montero?
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor, um. Yes, uh thank you for the public and thank you for the overhead departments and all the uh reports we receive, thank you very much. And talking about the uh centennial celebration of one hundred year, so uh the committee have put this uh save the day flyer. So it has, you know, July eight, July nine, July ten, July twelve, all the events that has come. So good job, Mr. City Th- uh City Manager. Uh so they they're working due diligence to make sure that the centennial is gonna be a great event, okay? Uh just for people's calendar, on April nine, we're gonna have the Earth Day and the. and the Bunny Extravaganza and the Resource Fair. So just put on your calendar, Sa- Saturday, uh, April nine, at the Memorial Center Park, we're going to have the Earth Day celebration. Um, just a few things for the sanitation district meeting that was held last week. Uh, July first, uh, they were going to have an increase of uh two percent on your sewage. Like, you know, like, you know, every year you'll receive a tax bill that is a an item there that they will say sewage sanitation district. So it will be a two percent increase as of July first. So an average uh sewage bill on that bill is about two hundred and forty dollar. So you're going to see a two percent increase on that two hundred and forty dollar, okay? And and the other good things about the sanitation district, they keep tracking uh the COVID nineteen um virus through the sewage. So at least uh they seeing a decline on on the virus in in our sewage. So that means we're going in the right direction. Um, so that will give us an indication if the virus is prominent or is or is 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 going down. So they seeing that it's going down uh since uh January, they keep tracking uh all the sewage that goes into the system, and they monitoring and they saw that uh the virus is is decreasing. So it's a good, it's good news. Again, uh for people out there, don't forget, uh, you can go to the Clean Power Alliance and that org. If you're behind on your electric bill from due to the COVID from from two thousand nineteen to present, uh, they can, uh, you know, pay your bill uh and clean up, clear your your past due, so. Cleanpoweralliance.org, okay, to go there if you're behind on your electric bill. Um, and I think, yeah, well, and um I just want you guys to pay attention on these uh economically developed, right? Because uh there's a lot of things that is going to go, is going to happen. Uh, some of you probably is going to be contacted later on to to give some type of an interview, answer some question about what is your goal, your vision for economic development, okay? And that is one of the things that we brought up also, you know, the issue about the uh all the boulevard, you know, the business that's been bought up with the plywood that the owners doesn't want to take them out. Because they said if we take them out, we're going to put glasses, it's going to break again. So that's what we come up with idea of create the murals, right? Uh, so th- those kind of things to beautify Hawthorne instead of seeing those uh border up business. Uh, so a lot of good things are going on. Uh, like I said, you know, later on, we're going to bring you uh some zoning changing, some parking zoning changes, so to so to benefit the business. So and also to 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 open Hawthorne for business. That's what we're trying to do. Not to keep Hawthorne in the back burner with all these uh laws and old ordinance that prov- that prevent business to come to Hawthorne, because we want Hawthorne to become a destination. Like always Ms. Valentine said, we want Hawthorne to be the destination for people to come, do business, dining and sleeping and 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 buy homes. So we want to make sure that Hawthorne is a friendly city, is a city of good neighbors, and that's what we want to do. So thank you and good night.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I've been receiving a lot of calls and emails with regards to tenants uh who are who are being evicted, who are um obviously very scared and um feel like they have no uh resources or a voice that could assist them in their efforts. I just want to make sure that our city is providing a referral to the Housing Rights Center and providing them to the right agencies in which they need to make a complaint with regards to their um living situation. I know there's a lot of complaints that are coming to various departments here in our city. And if that's the case, I want our city to be able to give a referral or assist them in referring them to the correct um complaint agency. So um, City Manager, can you reach out to the Housing Rights Center and see if we could get um someone from their office to come and do a presentation to the council uh with regards to resources on how some of our tenants can get assistance through their services? I also want um to see how we could work with um the Housing Department in the City of Torrance with regards to reporting um um buildings, apartments, uh those alike that are uh in dis- disrepair, uh have various plumbing issues, et cetera, on how those tenants uh have rights. Um, if you could do that for me and 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 see how we could maybe get someone from that department, uh Housing Department to come and do a presentation along with housing rights, because ultimately it's a two faceted uh program. But uh they have to make an official complaint to get any assistance. And if they're not doing that, they're just calling our city, it's a waste of time. But I want our city to be proactive and direct them to the appropriate agencies. So the cities need to do that. Our city needs to do that too. Um, I also want to uh make a directive and bring it back to the council with regards to uh Airbnb and uh policy with regards to Airbnb, let's take a look at that, revisit that again. Missed opportunities are opportunities um that we need to really, you know, stay focused on potential um sports and entertainment around our community or city. And so there's been requests with regards to that, and there's no real clear cut answer as to what the city is doing to help uh help and or not uh with Airbnb um rentals, temporary rentals. Um, I also want to provide another resource with regards to um, you know, helping uh families that can't pay their utilities. There's a lot of folks that are calling um that can't pay their gas or light bill. Um, I'm the liaison for D W P in the City of Los Angeles. However, for families in the South Bay region, there's a uh, it's an organization called Pace slash Heap. Um, and they assist uh families that can't pay their bills. You could contact them, give them uh your information. Uh, it's a one-time deal every year. Uh, they could assist you. However, you have to make an effort to at least uh make a payment arrangement. But uh the numbers to that location was Pace and Heap is two one three area code, uh nine eight nine three one seven seven. And yes, there are families that are unable to pay their bills and currently sitting in the dark. And um it is, it is true and it's real. Um, want to thank the um ongoing um testing site that we have at the Hawthorne Memorial Center for for those individuals that are looking to be tested to take advantage of that. Again, it's in your 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 backyard, you could be able to go and and get tested, and they're there uh providing that service. So that's, that's good. Um, want to thank staff for all the the hard work that you're doing to all the presenters here today, especially making efforts to let the businesses know that we have money and how you could tap into that ultimately and uh assist your business. Um, there's a lot of uh upcoming dates with regards to our um working, working group committee on cannabis and town hall. So make sure that you look up those dates. One particular is a Saturday, February twenty-sixth at one P M at Hawthorne Memorial Center. And the other is March third at eleven A M, uh, which is a Thursday, Saturday, March twelfth at three P M, and Wednesday, March thirtieth at six P M. Uh, again, uh, being proactive with regards to bringing community information and more importantly, education and uh showing that um what we're doing is everything uh in our power to make it more more um educational than anything, but also transparent. So um, thank you to all of those that are working hard each and every day here in our city, and I know we're getting closer and closer ultimately to opening up. I know there's still complaints with regards to residents uh unable to make an appointment or get access to the city. We are backlogged. We we get that. We 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 are struggling with that. I hope, you know, we could get s- at some point, from what I understand, we're we fill in a lot of the positions, if that's if that's what I'm hearing. A lot of the positions are being filled, so. Uh, thank you again. Have a great evening, and um it was a great uh Super Bowl game. Very exciting.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, we're gonna move on to the Councilwoman.
Thank you. Um, so I want to, I want to thank Councilmember Montero for bringing uh Mr. Ramsey and Mr. Brock, Mr. Kevin Ramsey and Mr. uh Tarek Brock to the city. I think um they were excellent examples of uh success, uh successful um Americans who have achieved greatness um in our, coming from our communities and a great role, great role models for our children. I would like to direct staff to inform the city council of any developments that are in the pipeline pursuant to S B nine. If you remember, S B nine um uh bypassed local control and allow and allows multifamily housing to be built in single-family neighborhoods. I would like to know if there are any in the pipeline, even if they're going to the planning commission. I'd like to have them inform the council whenever we get any S, what would I call S B nine developments, and those are going to be uh developers who are taking advantage of this new law. Um, so because even though we're pushing back against it, it is still law. It will, until it is overturned. So um, I ex- fully expect developers to try and take advantage of it and build multifamily housing in our single-family neighborhoods, and I'd like to know when that takes place. Um, the uh South Bay Cog has a program called Cash for Kitchens in which its team visits restaurants in different cities to give them free water-saving devices and information about great discounts on energy-saving equipment. And I went with the team on February first. We went to seven different restaurants uh to provide this information on the um on Cash for Kitchens. And um we'll be going out again when the green business certification program is rolled out, and that will be as soon as they get the grant. One of the things I wanted to mention that um I learned from talking to the owners, they are all suffering from staff shortages. And uh it 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 comes out in different ways, because if you're going to a restaurant and they're having staff shortages, that means that they're probably, they close earlier than they normally would, or they don't have the staff to 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 wait on you, or they have to um, I know like with with one of the restaurants where they used to have a buffet, they don't have a buffet now because they don't have anybody to manage it. So it's, 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 we're, our businesses are struggling, and I'm I'm hope, I'm very hopeful that we'll be able to roll out this ARPA money for them so that they can get some relief, because they really are struggling. Um, and uh the last thing I wanted to mention is I want to make sure that the city man, the city manager um um heard my directive when we were, when we were talking um to the uh to the contractors for 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 the business survey uh to look at the feasibility and cost of expanding our outdoor dining under the ARPA program. So um I've seen some beautiful outdoor dining areas that other cities have developed, notably in El Segundo and in Manhattan Beach, and I would love to see us be able to do something like that here. Obviously, there's a, there's a cost involved. I don't know how much it is, so I'd like for us to look at that. Um, it doesn't necessarily have to be on Hawthorne Boulevard, but I think Hawthorne Boulevard seems to be our target area, so we probably need to look at Hawthorne Boulevard first. But um I'd like to see because I think planning would have to be involved in that. The planning department would have to be involved in that, so they could tell us where the, where this development could take place. But um I've seen some beautiful developments where they just took city streets and just uh put uh beautiful uh planks, uh planks, painted them, put landscaping, put seats out and made um beautiful uh seating areas, put seats and tables out, made beautiful um outdoor dining spots for people to eat. And it just, it just really, it it in, it so improves the look of the city and the look of the street. So um I, if we can use ARPA money for that, I would love to see us do that. So uh I'd like for us to take a look at that. And that's all I have. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thank you very much. Mayor Proton Patterson.
We needed to unmute myself. Wanted to first thank the community for tuning in. I want to thank staff for the hard work that you do. Uh, you know, working all day and being up here all night, listening to us talk. Um, definitely appreciate your your commitment and dedication. Pull up some notes, um. So, you know, we approved a project that's happening on Court Area. I do like to, would like to say that um or approved to move forward, I would say that. I would like to say that, you know, it would have been ideal to see honestly a more robust project there. Um, you know, I I wouldn't, wouldn't say that's kind of I de- my ideal looking project, but I'm happy to be able to serve uh or make sure Hawthorne's take some steps forward in serving um veterans, but not just veterans, the those that are with low income. I did want to ask the uh city manager to put some some time into helping us to identify some other projects that we can pursue. Uh, I understand we have, what, six point nine million dollars in set aside funds for low-income housing development projects. And so I'd like to, you know, like for us to kind of really continue to, let's spend that money, uh and spend it well. Uh, let's invest it into our community, as as try to create um some more projects to benefit the community, community. Maybe even uh a senior citizens uh housing project or 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 program or whatever the proper term is, right? But something that can serve more than nineteen people. Um, so yeah, we can look into that. Got the money to spend, let's spend it, right? Let's help the community. Um. So, you know, speaking of, you know, thanking the community for paying attention, like when I, when I looked on YouTube, I was wondering if somebody can kind of correct me if I'm wrong or give me some information, but like, uh, I just looked five minutes ago, we have fifteen people who are viewing this live right now. Our last council meeting, we had a hundred and fifty-seven views. So my question is, are, is, are this the most amount of people that are watching these meetings? Are are these meeting being, meetings being broadcast on cable television? And more people were seeing the council meetings than just the amount of people that are looking at it on YouTube? So if somebody can kind of give me some information about that or not, like I'm, I would hate to hear that only hundred and fifty-seven views are happening for each council uh meeting, that there's no other, you know, viewing or uh uh of this, you know, these great debates and conversations. Um, definitely, you know, we have forty, we have a hundred thousand people in the city, forty-six thousand registered voters. Um, you know, we'll, you know, I would love to to be able to help even myself encourage more people to pay attention to the council meetings. So I'm just curious, is that, am I accurate when I'm saying that? You know, our meetings just been viewed a hundred and forty-seven times. Um, and then also, um, you know, something that the conversation that we had last council meeting about cannabis and cannabis consultant, it brought up by Councilmember Valentine, she brought up some really good points that, you know, this is something that the city's never done before. You know, we gotta take a kind of a different approach. You know, I really want to make sure that transparency is something that we're doing, um, you know, every step of the way. So um, I, you know, I'm not part of the working committee. I understand it's open for the public, but you know, I would like to ask, or look, if we can put this as a discussion item, there we go, to discuss is that, you know, if there is any um that any private conversations that may or may not happen with the consultants, whether it be or are any conversations with the consultants, whether it be uh uh agendized or not agendized, uh individual conversations with with council members or whatever, that that's disclosed with the pu- to the public. Want to make sure the public really knows, you know, everything that's happening step by step, right? And and I don't know if we can even, you know, publish minutes or or agenda or whatever the case might be though, but you know, I want to make sure that there's no kind of perception of private meetings happening, any kind of impropriety. You want to make sure that, you know, any, any meetings with the, with the consultants, especially by elected officials, are are of public knowledge. Um, had a great time, uh just moving on, had a great time uh watching the Super Bowl at the Muselage. Um, wanted to say uh uh Happy Valentine's Day, right? After the fact, right, uh stopped by and handed out some some roses to the Women's City Hall, and I wish everybody Happy Valentine's Day um a couple of days late. Um, hopefully everybody had a great time, spending time with loved ones. I got a chance to uh change some gifts for my daughter and all that stuff. So it was a great, uh, great Monday. That was a great weekend overall. Um, you know, I'm excited that we have so many events coming up. Um, I miss all these opportunities to really uh be out in community and and connect with, you know, with the residents. So I'm looking forward to everything that's coming up. Um, and if there's anything that's happening that I don't know about, please invite me. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, sir. Are there any go-backs from anybody?
Mr. Mayor, let me ask uh our city attorney a quick question. It's it's all benefit all of us. On Saturday, uh, that On Saturday, uh, that the town hall meeting, right, that uh for the uh cannabis and hot committee. Some of us might gonna be in the audience, alright, so is that, is okay?
Yes, that should be okay, um, just as long as we're not discussing any future agenda items with three council members together, that should be okay to attend the meeting. Alright, alright, thank you, thank you, Mister Mayor.
Okay. Mister City Manager, or Residents, no, I first I'd like to address the Residents uh for participating and watching. Um, I know that uh Mayor Pro Tem Patterson had mentioned, uh asked, and is curious about how many people. There are a sufficient amount of people that do watch over time, and, but there's a lot of people that still have cable, that are still watching on Channel twenty-two. And are watching it at home. Um, some of, you'd be surprised, sometimes it's uh, we think it's the older generation that still has the cable. Uh but it's a lot of the uh middle-aged folks and the young folks as well that have cable too, they have benefits to it. That's how they get their uh, their internet service as well, so. Uh, it's being watched, so thanks for, everybody for participating. Um, thanks for the uh city clerk asking for clarification on how he should pursue uh regulating the participation of the oral communication. So thank you, uh Mister City Clerk on that. The uh, so this uh, last week, uh the Southwest Regional Council of Car Printers contacted me, a local five-six-two. Uh contacted me and wanting to pass out and distribute uh N ninety-five masks. So uh, they, we joined together uh with the city clerk's efforts to distribute groceries. Uh to the legumes and the fruits to the community, and so it was a great success. So we had about what, about twenty to thirty uh members of the uh union that were here, uh, and like about thirty or more s- uh students that were participating on behalf of the city clerks. It was a great success, um, and uh I just, I, I just wanna commend you, Mister City Clerk, for your efforts. Because I was there helping you distribute the different things that were being distributed, and um it's a great effort, the students love it, the residents appreciate it. And uh our uh, our working men and women from the carpenters union uh were very impressed, so thank you, Mister City Clerk. Um, then, um, I also wanna commend the uh Centennial uh Committee that's organized, it's the Centennial. Lots of work, but um you guys are organized and you have great leadership in uh, uh Vaughn Norris and the other staff members that are at the uh. In the organ, at the higher organizing level that are helping uh push this along. So thank you, Vaughn, and all the people that are working with you. I wanna thank uh Councilmember Montero for the, you, you know what I'm gonna say, the great steak that you cooked up for us. Uh, I, I went and participated with my girlfriend, and uh we enjoyed the steak, it was really good. And the, a big old potato, my god. And it wasn't just a big potato that just looked good, it tasted very good, so thank you so much, and everything else, the, the dessert and. Uh, we had great company, we sat down with the Baubaus and a couple of the other residents that were there, and uh everybody really enjoyed it. So, uh, thank you for uh, for doing that for the community and for keeping the Moos Lodge running for so long. And it's still running, and it's because of these fundraisers that you have that it's able to do that, right? Uh Mister Directive, Mister City Manager, Mister City Attorney? Uh, I think, I don't know if we asked this last time, but I'm, I'm asking this now as a formal directive. To please uh put a cannabis tab on the city of Hawthorne website that includes Proposition sixty-four, its wording, uh Measure C C, the wording on that. Uh, the schedule of all the events in calendar form related to cannabis. It needs to be very like uh visible, it can't just be hidden within the tabs upstairs, you know, so people can just go in, find out what's going on. Um, and then also the links to the videos from the ad hoc committees, do we have videos that are being taken?
Starting uh this Thursday, we will videotape and post those items, uh, or those meetings on uh YouTube. And Mister Mayor, we do, we do have a tab, so we can add to that tab for cannabis.
Okay, yeah, and, but let's make sure it's not like they have to search for the tab, let's just kind of put it over, I mean, you don't have to put the leaf and everything. You can put the word cannabis or, or whatever, it's have it easy to uh be found, links to the videos and everything. Um, community, uh, any other information that needs to be closed, disclosed? Maybe even the, there's questions about the applicants' application, maybe you can put that up there, please? Just so that people know who these uh ladies are, or who is that selfiness, and to see that it was uh well thought over. And if people have questions, they can, you'll read it and that's that. Followed you on that, maybe get that going by um the end of this week or middle of next week, please? City Manager?
Yes, absolutely, and just a side note, I forgot, all meetings are actually posted currently. So the four meetings that the committee has uh conducted, they're all visible online.
If you could collect them all just right there in one place so that people uh take a look at that, okay? Uh, we've come a long way, but parts to the cannabis issue, um, don't want people to misinterpret, mistake, misrepresent. But everybody still has the opportunity to express themselves, right? So that's a good thing. And uh, we have a councilwoman named, she was here, I nominated her, I mean, I wouldn't have nominated her, I think she wasn't, didn't think she was gonna do a good job, but people just need to hear what's going on, okay? Uh, what else? Um, we're gonna be having the uh discussion at the special meeting on March third with regards to the charter cities. Um, I have talked to, um, I would have preferred, maybe we've taken a little bit more time to have discussed this, but. Um, in lieu of uh not having, not necessarily having the time, but uh moving forward at the pace at which we are moving. Um, the components that are important to me are that we're able to uh protect ourselves as much as possible from S B nine and S B ten. Uh, which uh unfortunately, some of our sister cities in the South Bay are having some trouble, since they are charter, uh, they are charter cities. Um, and they're still having trouble with the state, so, um, but I do understand, right, is that correct, Mister City Attorney? They're in a better position to be able to challenge that if they are charter cities, correct, sir?
My understanding is that the three charter cities in the South Bay, that's Carson, Torrance, and Redondo Beach, have initiated a lawsuit challenging S B nine. On the issue of whether S B nine is sufficiently narrowly tailored to meet the statewide concern.
So, if we're, we're gonna move forward with something like that, and if the voters approve, or if we decide to even put it on the ballot, and if the voters approve, there's two or three levels still that remain to uh go through. Um, I definitely uh would like to join that lawsuit eventually, as soon as possible, if that, everything comes uh into play, okay? Um, and what else, thank you to my colleague, it's about nine eighteen, I think uh this was one of the shortest meetings that we've had. I don't know, what do you think, Mayor Pro Tem? Kind of, yeah, you agree, right, you know, we always do this. Yeah.
Let's keep it going, but there's, there's time, we cut it down to forty-five minutes.
Well, I mean, I know about myself, I know about you, but what about? Okay, guys. Uh, I hope everybody had, oh, and then um. Uh, the Rams won, and I don't know if I'm supposed to say this, but I don't think, I don't think it's a secret anymore. They had their after-party, after-game celebration here in the City of Hawthorne, at the Hawthorne Airport. It's over and done with, so it's, you know, doesn't matter that I didn't say that. Um, and I heard, you know, so to have them come to the City of Hawthorne to have a party to party, I mean, for us, I think it's very significant. We are part of the um, the synergy that surrounds the Rams, uh stadium, the SoFi Stadium, so there's people. And if you guys noticed during the playoffs and uh during the Super Bowl, the hotels along Imperial Highway. Uh were filled with uh Bengals fans, uh with uh Forty-Niners fans, and all the recent games that we've been having where people are visiting from out of town. So that's awesome, I think that's something to be proud of. Okay, guys, so uh.
I have a go-back.
Go, oh my god, dude, you gotta do this earlier, go ahead.
No, it's a go-back based on what you said. And um, I, very respectfully, I have to say, if they had a party in our city, we should have been invited. We should have been invited and our staff should have been invited. There's no, there's no way that they, that, that they should have a party in our city and we are, don't even know about it. That's, that's not right, that needs.
I didn't know about it.
Huh?
I didn't even know about it.
That's what I'm saying, that's a problem, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
Just for the future, there'll be other parties, we need to be invited to these things. Even if we don't go, we need to be invited.
Hmm, okay, that kind of brought a little thin cloud over this whole thing.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I just uh, you know.
City Manager.
I'm just saying, you know, I'm just saying.
City Manager.
Yes, sir.
What happened, what went wrong?
Um, maybe the invitations were lost in the mail.
Okay, no, no, either way, okay, I mean, it's their party, it's their house, they decide to invite, I mean, I kind of disagree, but it's still cool that they were had it here in the City of Hawthorne. And I, I, obviously, I would have loved to have been there, and I think you yourself, um, you know all the players, right, Councilwoman Valentine?
That's right, but they didn't.
Alright, alright, guys, no, but um, great news, uh, great meeting, okay, this meeting is adjourned at nine twenty-one. Alright, good night, thank you. Night, everyone.
Night, everyone, thanks.